I'd like to call the Celine City Council Work Meeting to Order at 6:03 PM. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, Mayor Protem Dillon, Council Members Rice, Girba, Del Orco. CEO is now entering the room along with Council Member Kamara Sulek. From city staff, we have City Manager O'Toole, Clerk Royal, Community Development Director Harrington, DPW Director Searls, and Police Chief Radzik will be absent this evening. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended unless there are amendments.
So what is amended?
No, I don't think there's an amendment for the work meeting.
Oh, I thought you just said that.
You could amend it if you wanted to add another discussion item.
Approved as submitted.
Submitted, okay. Moved by Girba to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. I'll get you on the next one, Mr. Kamara Sulek. Call those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have, and the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences, so we'll proceed to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this council agenda. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. And just to be clear, we have an hour-long work meeting to discuss community event applications and waiver of fees for the 2023 calendar year. The record will reflect there are no public comments. Then we will proceed to our discussion. First up is Clerk Royal.
Good afternoon.
Pull that microphone just a little bit closer to you, Terry. Thank you.
So what you have in front of you are the public community events that we get every year. We did not have anything from Celtic because they're going outside the city, but the ones that we have are in front of you. I did get the Summer Fest today at the end, so I made a copy of that. I think it was Summer Fest. Yes, Summer Fest came in today, so I gave you a copy of it even though it has not been to DPW or the police or fire. So this is just showing you what last year's costs were compared to fees waived. And then I also gave you a copy of what they wore in 2022. So I'll be glad to hand you over to Larry or Colleen or anybody who can answer questions.
DPW Director Searls, would you like to proceed with some comments?
Well, Mayor, these events, for the most part, are pretty static as far as the setups. We've had some recent correspondence with some of the people that host the events. We're looking at meeting pretty regular or at least leading up to the events with Celine Mainstreet in the chamber and Allegiant to try and, if we can, streamline things where it makes sense and improve the hours that it takes to set these up.
Very good. DPW Director Searls, out of curiosity, for the record, the Celtic Festival relocating outside of the city, how much man-hours and staff time does that free up?
That definitely was the big one. That took more than a day or two to get set up and taken down, not to mention getting the part picked back up and back in, you know, presentable fashion.
Subsequent to the event.
Right?
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Harrington, City Manager O'Toole, any comments for the record? No? Easy enough?
I would just say, you know, obviously, council has adopted a new special event policy this year, so we are looking at these events now through that lens as well. And of course, the cost consideration, one thing we want to look at is, some of these events do have direct costs that the city has incurred in the past, not just labor costs. So when considering the fee waivers, council would be asked to consider whether they want to just waive in-kind only or continue to cover those direct costs.
Very good. We have some guests from Celine Mainstreet here. I wanted to afford them the opportunity to speak if they wish. Ladies, does anyone care to comment on any of the community events, specifically those that Celine Mainstreet is directly involved in?
We're just hearing a few questions.
Easy enough. Okay. Well, we will transition to questions. My general habit has been to start questions either at my extreme right or extreme left. I'm actually going to begin to my immediate left for this evening, so I'll start with Mr. Girba, work my way down to Rice, and then end with Mayor Protem Dillon, and then myself. So, Mr. Girba, you have the floor. Questions for staff or any of our guests?
Just a general question. You know, looking at 2022 and I guess the budget to actual, how did we blow through the budget so much?
I don't know that it's necessarily blowing through the budget. I mean, you're accounting for things that are pertaining to the use of staff time when working with agencies that are outside of our own. So we don't always have, I mean, when we talk about these fee waivers, that's one of the challenges, right? We don't always have direct control over how much staff time is going to be requested or needed for an event when new issues arise.
Did we change the way we were counting for?
Yes, we changed the way that we're, in this year, we changed to also include regular time, so true man-hours, not just OT.
I guess that was kind of my question, because when I was looking at the one, it appeared that, was it for Oktoberfest, the budget was significantly greater than what it was, I mean, the actuals were significantly greater than in past years.
So the actuals for '22?
2023, I think it is. Yeah, I'm sorry. It'd be calendar year 2022, but fiscal year 2023. If you look at the police costs and expenses, I'm just amazed that they're that much more than any previous year. And it's broken out between part-time, regular, and some other figure.
Yes, and so that other figure is also the, that's the fixed costs that we talk about. So materials, supplies, equipments.
Just a second, let me get to that. Well, the other part of that was, from my perspective, we as a council had approved a certain figure that we were going to expend, which was somewhere around $22,000, whatever. So looking at it, it was significantly over what it was unless the numbers are different than what we've seen in the past and the way that you're accounting for it. So for my concern, that in itself is an issue. We should never be expending more than what we identified for our budget, especially to that tune of almost 30%, or actually more than that. The other question I had was regarding the DPW and the Porta-Jons. So we've always charged for those. Have those costs gone up significantly? Is that part of the thing?
Yeah, they've went up, just like most other services, pretty significant over the past four years.
Okay. I'll allow my other colleagues to ask their questions. Mine was more the concern of the budget versus actual, and I would, in the future, would like to understand how we didn't understand, how we didn't get information that that had already occurred during the year.
So if I can touch on that real quick, I think a part of this is a lack of clearly established policies and procedures, right? We now have the special event policy that articulates the expectations for these costs. With that needs to be the procedure that post-events we report out on the actual cost of the event and whether any additional monies are due. And really, that's, that comes on a case-by-case basis when council is going to approve events, setting what figure we're approving up to so that that expectation can be made for the event organizers that if the costs exceed that, they will be responsible.
But you feel that the numbers that we've been reported over the last five years or 10 years, because this format hasn't really changed much.
Well, the format changed for this year's reporting to be, to include regular time as well.
But I just, our previous numbers were underestimated, is what I'm asking, that we act for the actual likelihood?
I think the previous numbers were probably underestimated because they did not fully capture everything that was being done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Girba. Mr. Del Orco, questions for staff or our guests?
Just for, real quick, for the city manager, I think our community events policy update or creation solved a lot of the issues that we had in the past, and that was the intent of that, of course. One thing I'm unclear on still is, how would we account for any time and a half or overtime with fringe that would be incurred as a result of community events if it, is that a cost overrun that's not budgeted for, or is that something that we anticipate would not take us out of the range?
So typically, we do budget for a certain amount of OT, and special events are considered when we put together the budget. But again, those are direct costs that we wouldn't normally have but for the event itself. So that's really where it comes to council's discretion, whether that's a cost we want to continue to waive.
Okay, all right. So I just need clarification on that. And then for either Jill or Rebecca, the Environmental Commission worked pretty feverishly to get some recycling efforts in place for both Summer Fest and Oktoberfest. And I wanted your perspective on how you think that went. Did it add additional cost for your vendors, or did it seem like it was a seamless process and that it was well-supported?
I think, I, we welcomed that. It was pretty seamless, and it did work pretty well last year.
Oh, great. I'm really glad to hear that.
It did gather a lot of, Al Hodge, I think he's on the Environmental Commission.
Right.
He was a member of that firm, and he did pay sort of like $1,100 for the service. But I think he was really happy.
Yeah, he's been instrumental in spearheading that effort for across the city.
Yes, and that we can do.
So you had good participation from the vendors. There wasn't a lot of pushback or moaning and groaning about it. It felt like people were on board. Okay, good. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Del Orco. Councilmember Rice?
Hi, this is for either Jill or Rebecca. I heard a lot of families speaking of trunk-or-treat and some safety issues, and I see that you've covered quite a few of them in your application, some of the things that you're going to try to mitigate by pushing trunks back from, in the Key Bank parking lot. The one question that I have, and this is probably for the city manager, you indicated that, you know, perhaps there's some way that you can indicate along Michigan Avenue for people to stay, you know, away from the street. I wonder if there's anything that we can do to work with MDOT to further put some sort of barricades up just along the sidewalk to keep the littles from, you know, ducking into Michigan Avenue. Just, you know, this doesn't have to be resolved tonight. It was just something that has come up a number of times over the years as the event gets more and more popular. Just making sure everybody stays safe off Michigan Avenue.
Yeah, I will say, if council is amenable to approving that event, I know Chief Radzik and I are very keen to then do whatever we can to ensure that we're distancing the event from Michigan Avenue, especially for small children. So I don't know offhand whether we'd be able to put anything on the sidewalk, but certainly additional barriers, you know, we have the very heavy water-filled barriers that we could use on the city side. It's just a matter of time and placement.
And then secondly, and I don't think anyone from the chamber is here, I was wondering, and I may just be reading this wrong, and one of my colleagues might be able to answer this for me, is the Christmas parade and the Christmas tree lighting on the same day this year now?
Yes.
Okay, I like that idea. That makes it a lot safer as well. Okay, those are my two questions. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Rice. Councilmember Kamara Sulek, questions for staff or any of our guests?
They've mostly been answered, and I was going to ask the same question as, as my colleague about the tree lighting. And the title of the event is Christmas Parade, and there was a lot of discussion and some disagreement on how that was titled, because we've had it, you know, the holiday parade in the past. But I just think that's something that we should get together in the community and make a decision on. It's nothing huge or to take care of tonight, but just so that people understand and how that decision was arrived at. And obviously, it's the chamber that's putting on the parade. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Very good. Easy enough. Councilmember CEO, any questions?
I have none, Your Honor.
Easy enough. Mayor Protem Dillon, questions for staff or our guests?
Thank you. Just quickly, I assume that the 2022 document we got is the reconciled version of that, because it does list out fringes and things like that, which I don't think we did before. I appreciate it, because it does sort of give us an apple-to-apples comparison. I've got a couple of questions. First, I think Mr. Girba talked about this. So does the city absorb the cost of the Porta-Jons?
No, we just, we order them, pay for them, we get reimbursed.
And then we get reimbursed for that. Okay. Because it's hard to sort of tell by this how that works. And then a couple of things. The summer music series, I thought we had talked about this before, that we were not going to utilize North Ann Arbor Street this year because Maple Road was going to be closed, and that was going to be a part of the detour route.
It does not appear that the timing of it, I spoke with city engineer Humphreys, it doesn't appear that the timing of it or that the detour will interfere with what will basically equate to four nights during the course of summer. It's about four nights, right? Or is it five?
Well, there's ten.
There's 10, Captain. Yeah, the overlap was very minimal.
Okay. And then sort of that folds over onto Summer Fest also, because Summer Fest utilizes that part of the street. I just want to clarify that. I don't want, I don't want Mainstreet to go ahead and start planning something and then us say, by the way, you can't do that, because we've kind of seen that splashback before. The other thing is, with the holiday parade, the tree lighting, there's documentation for the Merry Mile, which is the fundraiser road race for the cross-country team, I believe. And it's before the parade, and so are there any aspects, like are there police that are monitoring that or anything that's active during that part? Because I feel like we need to be mindful of that if they're getting a benefit out of somebody else's event and they're not paying for the cost. So I just want to understand, like, if we have police out that are monitoring, and it's prior to the parade, or should it get divvied among them, you know, just so that everybody has a line item and it shares?
Yeah, I apologize. Without Chief Radzik here, I'm not familiar enough with the history of the race or that event to know if we deploy any additional police services specifically for the race, but it's certainly something we can clarify.
Okay.
If I may, it's the same amount of resources, it just moves a few minutes early for the race. We're already staged. Both police and Public Works are already staged prior to that race starting. And we have been in good communication with the groups to make sure that when this becomes a package, it gets safe and efficient.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to, now that we're going to have the tree lighting, the road race, the parade, all sort of happening in the same timeframe, just making sure that we kind of share those costs across the spreadsheet, just for clarification for everybody for their planning purposes. Trunk-or-treat, that was another one that we've talked about, I thought, that had sort of outgrown its space, and we was contemplating whether or not we should move that to a different area. So I want to understand what the city's position is on that. And obviously, Chief Radzik's going to probably need to weigh in on this one at some point, of whether she, I thought she had said that she felt as though we had sort of outgrown that space for the number of attendees.
Yes, so myself and Chief Radzik did meet with the event organizers and discuss some of those concerns. The event has grown quite large for the location that it's currently in. There were some thoughts about relocation, but at the end of the day, you know, we do have to be somewhat reactive to what's actually being submitted to us. And the language that we received is, you know, basically, there are some of these changes that we feel we can adopt, but others, if it can't be done, it can't be done, and we wouldn't host the event. So ultimately, it'll be a decision for council to figure out if, you know, they're comfortable moving forward with it. You know, staff will make work what we need to. But certainly, anything that we can do to move people away from Michigan Avenue at night is a strong preference of myself and Chief Radzik.
Okay, I appreciate that. So at what point will we sort of have these conversations? Because I know that Mainstreet specifically is going to want to start planning their events, and if it were to need a different location, if they are going to collaborate with someone else, or however that would work, in finding, you know, the best place for it?
So Clerk Royal, is the intent that the applications would then be submitted for approval at our next meeting?
Yes, as long as Chief Radzik could answer the questions that are outstanding.
The 27th.
Yes, the meeting on the 27th would be the official approvals.
Okay. And I just have one other question, and it's for Mr. Searls. Can you sort of explain what is the line item equipment slash supplies?
We have, we have signs that we have to make, temporary signs, permanent signs. So it's all the materials that go into closing a road and advertising and displaying what it is. Directionals or wayfinding or closed that are, some are reused and some are.
Right. So along those lines, can we talk about that? The signs that go, the no-parking signs. Is there a way in which we can buy permanent ones or do something? It just seems as though we make those for each event.
But a lot of times with the no-parking signs, those temporary ones you're seeing, there's a date, there's a date associated, so it's one and done. Potentially, we could get like a printable date plaque, but the cost of a sign versus a printed piece of papers.
Right.
We could do a couple million.
Right. No, I was just trying to figure out a way to make it a little bit more, you know, environmentally friendly as well as for your staff. I watch them go out and pound those signs into the ground every, you know, six feet, and that's kind of a tedious task. So if we could figure out ways that, I don't know if that's possible, where we can close off sections, like the way that we have normal no-parking signs.
Yeah, we can, we can look at what we use and see if there's a way to add inventory over time that's not super caught, a big impact on cost.
And then do we bill those costs off to the events, or is that something?
They're all noted in here.
Okay, I just, that's what I was trying to figure out, if that was sort of like the Porta-Jon aspect. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the questions. We've got ample time, so we'll do one last go-through. Mr. Girba, any additional questions?
What is the recommended budget for this next year, based on this?
The recommended budget? Like the recommended total fee waiver?
Total fee waiver, yeah. Whatever we've done in the past, we always tried to go, again, as I said earlier, we had a dollar figure. Now, understanding that we have more clear data, my concern is, at least with the Celtic Festival, out of the picture, it seems to reduce that cost. So trying to understand exactly how much we're going to allow going forward would be helpful.
Well, I think that's, I mean, that's ultimately a direction that we need to take from council. So do you want us to present these as, you know, fee waivers of in-kind services only, but all hard costs associated would need to be recovered? Do you want to do true fee waivers, any costs associated? Do you want to set specific budgets for each event? That's kind of what the nature of this conversation is supposed to be about, so.
When you mention hard costs versus in-kind, how are you defining those?
I would, I would define that as any cost that we wouldn't otherwise be obligated to incur. So OT, purchase of materials, creation of signage, contract inspection services, any, anything of that nature.
Which is kind of, I thought, how we were doing it, because some of the in-kind costs were considered, if our officers weren't doing, what else would they be doing? And so that was kind of a in-kind service. You're right, if we had overtime or something directly related to that specific entity or unit of organization or whatever they were doing at that time, that would be charged out, which is fine. And then, of course, I think there were some other expenses, such as what you mentioned, the Porta-Jons or things that are needed. Generally, it wouldn't be something we'd pay unless it was part of a park event or something like that.
Yeah, I think, obviously, I can't speak to the history of how these things were accounted for, because I only have a couple of years of special event experience with you guys. But it seems to me like it got away from in-kind services and started to cover any sort of staff expenses. And so, you know, we were paying crossing guards, we were paying inspectors, we were paying OT. And to me, that's getting beyond in-kind necessarily. Certainly, if council wants to waive those fees, they can, but there should be a clear accounting of it and, as you say, then a budget, because then we are actually incurring costs and need to describe what we're willing to waive.
Could you and Treasurer Cole come forward with a suggestion on how you'd like to see it?
Sure.
I would just rather, because it'd be able to actually identify the, I mean, some organizations we do waive for, others we don't when they're fundraisers or something that.
Okay, but you're asking like the two most financially conservative members of the team to come up with that, so it's going to be just in-kind only?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
That's what we want.
That makes us a decision as to what the other costs would be if we wanted to waive them, so that's fine.
Not a problem.
Let me, if I may, Mr. Girba.
Yep.
Let me stick on his point, because I think that was very well articulated earlier this evening and again just now. Is there any objection to that recommendation, which is to empower the city treasurer's office to work in conjunction with the city manager's office between now and the 27th to come up with a fixed dollar amount for these events? Is everybody good with that? All right, excellent. Then we will proceed, and we'd like to see that then clearly enumerated as part of the recommendation that we'll vote on in three weeks. Thank you very much. Please, continue.
One comment. The only one that I feel strongly about supporting and has been is the Memorial Day Parade. I feel that's more of a recognition and so forth. So in terms of waiving fees for that, I'd have to have a good understanding of why we would do that. So that's the only other one. Thank you.
Okay.
Easy enough. Mr. Del Orco, any additional questions?
I have nothing further.
Okay. Councilmember Rice?
I agree with Mr. Girba on the Memorial Day Parade, waiving the fees. Other than that, no.
Okay. Mr. Kamara Sulek, anything else?
Nothing additional.
Mr. CEO?
No, nothing.
Okay. Councilmember Dillon?
So just for clarification, as far as the Celtic Festival, we will not have any hand in that event. Do we have materials in which they will ask to borrow or, like fencing and stuff like that, moving forward?
Not that, no one has made any request of DPW for anything for Celtic. They had a lot of stuff that's theirs. I believe that's all we have is what they, what is theirs.
I can comment on that. The only support I'm aware that we will be providing during the 2023 calendar year will primarily come from my office. I had assisted them or actually took the lead, I think, the last five years on corporate fundraising. That's being passed off to a volunteer, but I will be assisting with that transition. And then to an earlier point I made in one of my weekly communiques, I still need to connect with Attorney Chubbs on this, I would like to have a resolution formally separating the city from the Celtic Festival. And as part of that resolution, determining an exit date for the office space that they utilize downstairs, and then making clear that we are no longer going to be collecting and maintaining their mail, that some alternative means will have to be developed. Anything else, Councilmember Dillon?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know it was my turn.
Yep.
Yes, so thank you very much. We always sort of keep that slush fund miscellaneous. Ms. Royal, do you remember, have we used that in the past few years?
Not in the past few years because of COVID. Everything has pretty much gone to stop. But we did, previous to that, we would have, sometimes we would have like a, and they had, oh, some kind of hockey game downtown out by, it was, it was like room hockey, yeah. So there was some things that were used with it in the past, but it wasn't, it hasn't been well-used. But it's nice to have it set aside.
No, that's fine. I was just wondering. I have to say that I agree with understanding sort of what Mr. Girba had said about having a threshold for expenses, and we establish our own budget, and anything over that, the entities themselves are going to have to be responsible. responsible for. Um, I understand the costs, um, in real time. I think we can establish some sort of a budget from that. Um, and just also understanding whether or not we're going to have the manpower. Um, I know that it seems like each of our departments have their own, uh, shortcomings as far as staffings at times. And there's definitely busy seasons and making sure that we have adequate staffing, I think, is going to be very important and a key to this. And understanding that overtime is just projected and it may be significantly higher. Um, I know there was a notation on, uh, the memo that we received that the police fees may increase. The other thing that I would like to make mention of is making sure that we run these through. I know there is a line item at the end where each department signs off, but making sure that the fire department doesn't have anything that they need to, that they're kind of kept in the loop with these processes and that they're in agreement that these work, um, early on, um, before we even approve them and understanding that that, that part of it is, is taken care of. So that, like I said, it's not coming back to us at the last minute for changes.
Now, these have all gone through the, the, um, fire department. And for the nine years I've been here, I have never gotten a fee for the fire department. So the only thing that I've gotten from the fire department was when they said no to closing down South Ann Arbor. That was the only thing I've had in the last nine years. And
Okay.
That was bad enough, so.
Yep. No, that's fine. Just making sure that they see all the applications before they're approved.
They do. Yep. He signs off on each and everyone. If he, like he had, um, the chief had hip surgery or something, so there was a lieutenant or something came in and, and did all the other ones. So
Fantastic.
But they have all been signed off except for the one that we received tonight.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Any additional questions? Mr. Gearbaugh, before a wrap-up?
Just one other number I'd like to have added is the number of hours DPW and, um, and what we're waiving in terms of number of hours for each event, both on police and on DPW or equivalent. So we can have that information to understand how many hours are being used to.
Sure. So we'll, um, probably, the way we'll structure it then is we'll do a waiver of up to a certain number of hours or budget of regular time with associated fringe. Um, and then anything that has a hard cost, OT, uh, supplies, materials, equipment would be not included.
Um, I just have one other question. And actually Jill, this is going to be kind of for you. Um, tonight we have an issue where foundations of Celine schools want to have us, we have to sign off on a raffle request, whatever. When you all do a raffle, do you go through the state of Michigan to get a license?
We do. We get a license.
Have you ever been requested to come to us as a body to approve that?
Nope. No.
All right.
This is really just, um, they just ask for like the location of it and that they don't ever ask for any kind of city sign-off. The only thing we ever have to have a city sign-off on is on the liquor license.
Okay. Which, yeah, I need the liquor license. It's just that we had an issue with a raffle tonight and I wanted to understand because there's many nonprofits have a similar thing. And if you had to approve every single one of those, it'd be getting, be a lot of red tape. Thank you very much.
Okay. If there's nothing further from council or from staff or our guests, thank you for your attendance. Appreciate it.
I have one question though.
Please.
Are we talking about waiving fees or not waiving fees? When that decision is made, does that information relate to us? But if fees aren't going to be waived, do we work that into our budget? How does that?
Yeah, I, I would expect that at the next meeting, we'll have each one of these applications on the agenda and they'll each have their own summary of what the fees would be based on what department heads have already figured out. And when council moves to approve the event, they'll approve the fee waiver up to a certain number of man-hours and/or, um, dollar figure.
And because you will have enumerated, uh, action items on the agenda for the 27th, we can have the clerk's office email you, of course, not only a copy of the agenda, but all the support material that goes with it. And that'll be sent out in, in real time. You'll get it just as soon as the, the rest of us get it. And evidently for those in the audience, you can sign up for the same program by going to Minutes on Demand on the city's website. If you have any problem, uh, signing up or, uh, accessing agendas either for council planning commissions, EBA parks, what have you, uh, feel free to connect with the, the city clerk's office. Um, if there's nothing for you, you have one more comment?
Um, yes. Uh, since we have some extra time, I did want to find out about sidewalk, sidewalk cafe tables. Are those something that council wants to move forward with this year? I know last year, um, Brecken had where a, a light or something got hit and it was very close to where a table was set up. Is that something we want to go forward with? Because I send out my letters at this time every year. So if we want to move forward, I need to send those letters out. But if we're not, I need to let them know that also.
And remind us who in 2023, 2022, excuse me, had outdoor cafe seating that was reviewed and approved by the city of Celine? Was it just Brecken and Max?
And, um, the coffee shop.
Oh, Kerrigan Cafe. Okay. Very good. So, uh, following normal protocol, you would be mailing those applications when? The end of this month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let me start with Mr. Gearbaugh. Um, any reservation or hesitation with the clerk, uh, mailing out those applications?
No, I mean, the same standard would be as the liability falls upon the restaurant. Um, I know there's an issue on the traffic, but that's the issue with Michigan Avenue and South Ann Arbor Street. So I don't have a problem committing to do what we've always done.
What about for Leather Bucket? I'm sorry.
Say again?
The Leather Bucket Alley. I, I just wanted to make sure I get all my ducks in a row.
Nobody applied to use Leather Bucket Alley last year, correct?
No. Uh, Paul did.
Oh, he used Leather Bucket Alley last year? Okay.
Brecken Grill did. Yep.
Same process.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Uh, if I may, my position would mirror, uh, that of Mr. Gearbaugh. My only stipulation with Leather Bucket Alley is there has to obviously be, in perpetuity, there has to be a pathway maintained because that is a public access point. So whomever has tables in that alley, there has to be a, a path in the center for pedestrians to access. Mr. Delarco?
That's fine.
Okay. Councilmember Rice?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Camaro Sulek?
Good.
Okay. Mr. CEO?
I agree.
Ms. Dillon?
Yeah, I mean, sending out the applications because we will then review them. Um, obviously Brecken felt as though it was enough of an issue that they were putting safety cones out at one point.
They don't, those do not come to council. Those are approved administratively.
Oh.
That's why I wanted to ask.
Okay.
The Leather Bucket will come, but the sidewalk cafes, those or the sidewalk tables, I handle those and I send out the certificate once I get the money and everything.
Then I, you know, I don't know whether or not we should solicit input from the police chief or such about whether, you know, there's a safety concern with it.
Well, those applications are reviewed by public safety, are they not?
Yes.
Yeah.
They're given out to the fire, the DPW and
At least before she signs off and issues a permanent term.
Right. I, I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page before I sent those out.
Go ahead, Mr. Gearbaugh.
Uh, my only concern being that they don't place things that are, um, how shall I say? A hazard.
Right.
Because lately there's been a lot of stuff being put out along the curbs that even though it's trying to ni- make it look nicer, they're starting to become more and more. And every year it seems like we get a little bit more.
Are we talking about like poding plants?
Like potted plants and some of the other things.
So you don't want to see things like?
Well, no, I'm just making sure that it's not something
Trip hazard.
Trip hazard or a hazard for drivers or any of that type of thing.
And I usually go out there to make sure that we have the five foot because me and Mary Hess will talk about it. And we will make sure that there's a five-foot pathway. So I just wanted to make sure. And then finally, because we still have a little bit of time, um, I wanted to find out if you guys would be interested in me starting the process to look at going from two-year council terms to four-year council terms. We've talked about it.
I can start, I can start that off. I would prefer that be, that, that be looked at holistically as part of a charter review, um, committee, which, um, if we don't set up or if I don't have, uh, the, my ducks in a row to ask council to establish that at our second meeting in February, it would certainly be our first meeting in March. Uh, I'm not opposed to doing that, but I, I wouldn't want to look at that. That issue should be looked at a, a, as part of a broader context, which is, uh, the, the, the city charter, which really hasn't been, you know, holistically reviewed in, in nearly four decades.
Okay.
Mr. Gearbaugh?
I agree. And I've been wanting to be part of that charter review and we were trying to find a chair for that. So, um, yeah, at this point in time, it needs to be a holistic bill approach, as the mayor has said.
Mr. Delarco?
Yeah, same.
Councilmember Rice?
Same.
Councilmember Camaro Sulek?
Yeah, I agree. I'd be interested in what the cost savings is because I, I know that's a lot of work for you, for your office especially.
Yes, but I mean, we'll do the elections. I was just trying to save money. I'm trying to get good with the boss here, so.
Mr. CEO?
I agree with the idea of the charter review. And like Mr. Gearbaugh, would welcome the opportunity to serve on such a committee.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Dillon?
No, absolutely. The charter review committee is something we've talked about, I think, for about a year or so or so. So seeing that move forward, I think, would be great. But aside from that, what does that process look like on your end?
Um, there's a resolution and you have to have the, you have to have everything to the, um, state 17 Mondays prior to an election. So there's certain day, I know, but it's, it is what it is. So that's the only reason. So that if we were going to look at it for November, I wanted to start working on it now. So if we're going to start the charter review, it won't happen until probably November of next year.
That's a third of the year's Monday.
I know, right?
Rounded.
So anyway, but thank you. I wa- I was just trying to find out if I was, if that was where you guys wanted to go with that.
Very good. Um, if there's nothing further, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn this work meeting at, uh, 6:41.
So moved?
Moved by Gearbaugh's second.
Second.
Seconded by Camaro Sulek. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Meeting is adjourned. We will start our council, uh, our, our regular meeting promptly at seven. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Uh, we'll, we'll start by calling the roll. Members present this evening are council members Camaro Sulek, CEO, Delarco, Gearbaugh, Rice, Mayor Protem, Dillon, and Mayor Marl. From city staff, we have city manager O'Toole, Clerk Royal, Assistant City Manager Getzmann is in the back, uh, Community Development Director Harrington is here, along with DPW Director Searls and Waste Water Treatment Superintendent Briggs. Um, uh, there is an agenda in front of you. There are copies of the agenda on the back table. You're welcome to take them. There's a signup sheet along with hearing devices if you require them. Um, at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Moved as submitted.
Moved by CEO to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll proceed to the first of two, uh, citizen comment periods. Uh, under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this council agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items?
Hello, Mary Hess. And, uh, the discussion I would like to talk about is the interest of the Monroe Street property that is owned by the taxpayers of Celine. I came to look at the agenda during the week and this is the only information that has presented to, I guess, the council and to the neighborhood and to the public taxpayers of Celine that own it. And it's concerning. Uh, the other thing is there were comments made last week as far as the sidewalk across from the library to the others. So that would be on the, uh, agenda. But, uh, and also there were comments made about the height of stories. And yet on the agenda, it said three comments were made. I do understand, Mayor, and the, the history of not answering people if they would ask a question coming up tonight in front of you. But I would hope that that question or concern would be written down and maybe looked at at a later date. Uh, to just put three comments on the agenda for the minutes, somebody came up and was interested in talking about something in particular. And it, I, I can just be a comment. That's no problem. But there's other people that come up and it would be nice if it has a little footnote as far as what the subject was. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there additional comments on agenda items?
Sal Randazzo, uh, I want to comment on item 2340, 16201, the Ethics, Board of Ethics bylaws. Uh, I would just made familiar, uh, about this today. It seems like this board, from what I read, is going to be quite powerful, be able to sanction and actually remove, uh, council member or, uh, mayor perhaps. Uh, and, uh, I didn't, uh, I haven't seen published a copy of what the proposed bylaws are or the bylaws that you're voting on because my concern is, as a citizen, is these boards becoming powerful as they can be, can become politicized. And I would hate to think that such a board, uh, you know, depending on who appoints the members of the board, uh, might have some, uh, allegiance, uh, to people one way or the other. And also in this era of cancel culture, you know, what defines, uh, um, an ethical breach? And now I can understand any of the board members if you did things that were clearly illegal, that, uh, you know, you would have, uh, legal consequences to face by that. But I would like to see more transparency on what the bylaws are, how you're going to select people to this board, how you're going to prevent in the future a board like that being politicized and maybe controlling, uh, member or members on the council. Uh, the other thing is a, a lot more transparency on, um, the bid process. Uh, you've got a 500 million, a $500,000, half million proposal here to approve tonight. Um, more transparency on, on that with the citizenship. Uh, 1,900,000 to Tetra Tech. I mean, Tetra Tech's been around Celine for a long, long time. I'd like to see more transparency with the citizenship. Why, why are we, these are, I believe, no bid, uh, contracts and, 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 you know, what are we doing to make sure we are getting the best for the citizens of the city of Celine? Last thing, Ford Truck, uh, was that competitive bid? The price looks good, but just curious. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randazzo. Any additional citizen comments on agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Ted Drews, live at 284 Mark Hannah Court, and my concern is 207 Monroe Street. Looking at some of the, uh, conceptions for it, I see that we're going to probably lose, uh, a big tree line and part of the watershed that, uh, goes down into the creek. Uh, and I know this is probably not the, uh, the final, uh, drawing and depiction, but, uh, again, with, with these many new units and can be new units anywhere in the city, we have an overtaxed wastewater treatment plant that we're going to add 38, 30 to 38 more houses to, and we're adding new houses to the infrastructure every year. And we're, we're trying to get, uh, Tetra Tech to engineer again a fix to keep it from stinking. And out my backyard, there are evenings in the summer where I get run back inside. And if it didn't have air conditioning, I don't know what those folks do. But it is horrifying to smell that. And I'm sure these 38 people that are going to move into this new complex are going to just enjoy that too. Let's get the cart, you know, behind the horse and get the Tetra Tech people Let's get the cart, you know, behind the horse and get the Tetra Tech people to fix that sewer plant, and then start thinking about where houses go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. Any additional citizen comments on agenda items?
Matthew Rockwell, 225 Sheffield Condos, Celine, Michigan, 48176. I took a look at this three times today. We have enough condos, and that area over there should not be built on. One, because it's a farm, piece of farmland, and it's a nice piece of farmland. I know someone that owns it and wants to farm it again. Down by the creek there, he has a house, and if it rains, it overflows into his backyard. Two, we need to keep the sewer treatment plant at least as clean as we can, because you idiots keep, you knuckleheads, keep kicking it down the road. This is a can that keeps getting kicked and kicked and kicked since Mary Hess was on board. So I don't understand you guys. I really don't. I don't. So I would at least like a reason why we have a council.
Any additional citizen comments on agenda items? Well, I, please, yes, absolutely. You'll have three minutes once you begin.
Hi, everyone. My name is Joel Waddell. Happy to be here. I'm just stopping by from Congresswoman Dingle's office. Just wanted to stop in, kind of let you guys know that, you know, obviously, as you know, we're representing the district now, and as we move into this new Congress, new year, wanted to make sure you all know that our office is a resource, both constituents and to the council. We, Mrs. Dingle definitely wants to collaborate and support you all as much as, as much as possible. So definitely want to be in touch and work together. Let us know as you're working through issues, as you're planning events, if there's small things going on in the community, we'd love to hear about that. Mrs. Dingle loves to know about those. And yeah, just support and collaborate you all as much as possible. I will make sure all of you have my contact, and Mayor Marl, I owe you an email. We're going to sit down. And yeah, Mrs. Dingle is very excited to be kind of representing you all and moving into this new district. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your attendance this evening, and you give our Congresswoman and friend, Debbie Dingle, our best. Appreciate you being here. Thank you for your service. Any additional citizen comments? Well, I do appreciate all of those, and I do want to make just a few brief statements before we transition to the presentation of tonight's agenda. So we do have one, we actually have two separate proposals to develop 207 Monroe Street. We'll be hearing one this evening, and then a second at our subsequent meeting, and because of the President's Day holiday, we're pushed back a week. So the second proposal for 207 Monroe Street will be entertained by City Council on February the 27th at 7:00 PM. It is my intent, subsequent to that, to have a discussion with my colleagues at the following meeting on March the 6th in terms of how we would like to proceed with either the sale development of this parcel or an alternative idea, if it has, if it has merits. As to Mr. Randazzo's comments on the ethics policy, we'll be able to address many of those concerns during the discussion on unfinished business items 16-201 and 2340. I would note, for the public's benefit, that all of the support material for both the ethics policy and some of the other issues that were touched upon during the comment period tonight, including an engineering contract with Tetra Tech and the purchase of a F-550 Super Duty truck. There is a hard copy of the packet with all the support material and bid documents in the kiosk up front. You can also access any of those documents at any time by going to Documents on Demand. And for every council meeting, those documents, including the agenda, are available in real time. You can access them the same time we get them. They're usually sent out and distributed between about 2:00 and 4:00 in the afternoon the Wednesday prior to a council meeting. So again, thank you for your comments, and many of those will, many of those items will be discussed later this evening or at subsequent meetings. If there are no additional citizen comments, we proceed to the one and only presentation of the evening, which is a proposal from Lewis Klein Homes for the development of 207 Monroe Street. Gentlemen, the floor is yours, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, there's not a PowerPoint presentation today, just this one image that is, appears on the screen.
Yes, that is correct. Good evening. My name is Mark Lewis from Huntington Homes, Lewis Klein Properties. Before I start the presentation, I just want to hand out one other thing that came late. It's these elevations.
Take a look at it. You just, Mark, if you want to hand them to Councilmember Rice, we can make sure they're distributed to the entire group.
Yep. As I say, we've been building and developing in the city of Celine and Celine Township for fifteen years or so, fifteen-plus years, probably. Where they can look at this particular parcel of property, 207 Monroe Street, the vacant parcel, and we believe that it can fill a very large void in what's currently available to citizens from all, from all over. That is affordable, single-family housing that you really don't have, we have a development called Curtis Park that is really directly across the street from this parcel. And that beautiful project, but it's expensive. It's more expensive. It's in the $400,000 range. We have another project called Maple Cove on Maple Street that is on the little lower end, $275,000 starting price. We believe these particular condos are going to come in, in sort of our donut hole in the midpoint, at about $300,000. Their units are going to be 1,400 to 1,600 square feet, three-bedroom, which is really hard to find a three-bedroom apartment project these days. Two and a half bath, two-car garage, all the appliances, Energy Star, energy-efficient units, essentially really ready to go. I mean, many of these projects get advertised at pricing that doesn't include a lot of the items, like appliances, central air conditioning, things of this nature. This particular project has all of those bells and whistles, which are fundamental for any high-end project. We don't really have a final site plan yet. Obviously, we haven't even purchased the property. We hadn't had any approvals from anybody. We just wanted to give you, give the council an opportunity to see what we're proposing to do on these elevations. We're looking at probably the, that second tranche of units there. The difference between those various elevations are really the location of the garage. Many times, the garage is located in the rear of the building. In this situation, we're going to have the garages in the front of the, of the building. Our intention would be, if we, if we're able to develop this park project, is to utilize as much of the existing infrastructure that's been installed as possible. You have a storm system that's been pretty much installed there. There's obviously a road. There's still a lot of work to do, but the idea here was to try to utilize as much as we possibly could to, you know, which would minimize disruption and bring the project along much, much faster. Really, I don't have much more to say. I would like to hear if you have any questions or comments or objections or whatever it may be. We would like to address those tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Mark. Let me first defer to City Manager O'Toole, who is on a steering committee, along with Mayor Potem Dillon and Councilmember Girba, to evaluate the potential sale and development of this parcel. Is there anything that you would like to add at this time?
One thing I'll just note is that, for the residents' sake, the parcel is currently zoned for residential purposes, so those are the only types of uses that we're considering right now. I believe the current density allows for...
So at an R3A, you could have, I believe, if there are single occupancy units, so one-bedroom units, you could have forty-eight, I think it's twelve per acre at single bedrooms, ten per acre at two-bedroom, and then nine per acre at three bedrooms plus. So, but if they chose to pivot to a condo project, which is not necessarily multifamily, I guess that the detached townhomes could be, or if they chose for detached, single-family lots, you could have twenty-one at 7,800 per square feet per lot. They're all likely going to have to go through a PUD process as well.
So essentially, the, both of the proposals that we'll ultimately consider, this one and the one on the meeting on the 27th, will meet the current zoning standards of the site.
Let me jump back, Ms. O'Toole, to a comment that was made during the public comment period by Mr. Drews, because he asked a very bona fide question, and I get that question a lot. Between you and the Community Development Director, can you speak to how projects are evaluated at the time of their inception in terms of the impact that they would potentially have on utilities? Not just water and sewer, but roads, sidewalks, et cetera?
Absolutely. It is the standard practice of the city. Anytime a new development is considered, that we work with our consultant engineers to determine how that usage will impact our existing system. We do have capacity available within both our water and wastewater system. And frankly speaking, in a case where it's infill of an existing city lot, the connection is very straightforward, wouldn't require a lift station or any additional infrastructure on the city's part, it's a, it's a real big win, because those are additional users that will ultimately help to pay for the rehabilitation of the plant. So new users to the system help spread out that cost over more users over time. But in this particular case, consultant engineers and staff do not feel that twenty-one units would be at all onerous to the existing system.
Very good. Thank you for that comment.
If I can add on to that, too. So part of the process here, too, is if the city chooses to sell the land, either this developer, another developer, or something totally different, no matter what's built on that site, it'll have to go through a site plan process, unless they were single standalone residential units, is the only exception to the site plan process. And as part of that, there have to be deep engineering reviews. If there are concerns about traffic, it's well within the city's right to request a traffic study be conducted, a parking study, whatever that may be, to ensure that the site is adequately served by city services, as well as adequately served for the residents there, whether that's for parking needs or other requirements.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Girba is a member of the steering committee on 207 Monroe Street. Anything you'd like to add at this time?
Not at this time.
Councilmember Dillon?
Not at this time.
Okay, then we'll open it up for questions. Try to limit folks to about five minutes apiece. Are there questions for either city staff, members of our steering committee, or the representative from Lewis Klein Homes? Mr. Girba, please.
I guess to speak for Mr. Harrington. So twenty-one is the maximum number of condominiums that are allowed in here because of...
So it depends on how we skin it. So condominiums are going to be a little bit separate, because that's going to fall under an R2 classification. And just so we're all on the same page, the property is owned R3A, but per our code, it can be walked back by right to an R2 use, to an R1C, to R1B, R1A, or R1. And R1 would be like our largest estate lots in the city. So it has the capability to be walked all the way back to R1, but the minimum standard for single-family homes or condos in this case would be 7,800 square feet per unit. And then if you take the four acres at a square footage rate, it roughly equals twenty-one and a half, so we would round down to twenty-one in this specific instance.
I guess this is a question for, when you indicate $300,000, is that the base, average cost of the build-out?
That would be the base, that'd be the base cost. Yeah, the advertising. I mean, many times, folks come in and want extras. You don't really know what they want, but, so, yeah, so, I mean, it could get much higher if they want extras, like a finished basement or something like that.
And so these will have basements?
Yes.
I guess my other question on this one, when you look at this in terms of the density, would you consider this as much as what you'd want to put on that land?
I'm sure, I'm gonna make sure I'm following you.
I guess my question is, you're only doing condos.
Right.
You believe that's the only thing you want to do is put...
I believe so. I think the apartment projects, you know, you could obviously have a much more dense project. But from our point of view, it's, it becomes, I don't think it's going to meet the market niche that we're looking for. We want to apply to families, try to give them an affordable option. You have so many recreational items nearby where you have, many times, you don't have a lot of kids in condominium projects. But in this situation, you would have a great ability to have places where they can go and blow off steam, do the things that kids like to do, including the adults. So, and it's obviously a very walkable, it's a great location. We've had great success with Curtis Park, and we just think this would be just a step down in terms of pricing, and a little bit smaller unit, but in terms of the bells and whistles, it's going to be very, very similar.
Thank you. Any additional questions for staff or the applicant? Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. Are you proposing single-car garage, or are they...
No, they're going to be, well, we have two scenarios. You could have one where you have a stack garage, where you have two cars in. We really like the two-car garage version the best. I mean, this, this building footprint is quite adaptable. You can sort of widen it, make it a little longer. So, yeah, it comes down to, I guess, we haven't really decided in terms of market, but we believe it needs to have a two-car at base minimum.
Okay. Because that was my concern. If it's a three-bedroom, I would think, as far as parking is concerned...
You need two cars.
That I just don't see, because you're not, you're not going to have on-street parking, and I don't see, from your very preliminary drawings at this point, any, you know, any parking off, you know, additional spaces.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's really a little bit premature. I think...
No, that's fine. I understand. I just wanted to clarify that that's what you were looking for.
Because there's usually a guest parking scenario that's going to be part and parcel of this, as part of the zoning or the site plan process. So I don't want to just say there won't be any additional parking there. It always becomes a sore spot in any kind of development to have adequate parking, certainly for the residents. You want to have the two-car garage. And then, obviously, they have space behind the garage, just outdoors, for guests.
And then my next question is probably for Mr. Harrington, which is, if you were to do an overlay of this project with the previous project that was scheduled to be on that property, how would that be in comparison?
I think the previous project was thirty-three units, so it was twelve units more dense. And I think they proposed surface parking lots, as opposed to having two-car garages with driveways. So there's, there's some major differences in that. Overall, this project that's proposed, and I believe the one that's going to go before you at the end of the month, are both significantly less dense than the previous project. So this is about five to six units per acre. The Faradine project was probably ranging around nine-ish, eight to nine-ish units per acre, and currently, like I said, they could build upwards to twelve of single-bedroom units per acre, so.
So I guess more so beyond density is just sort of the overall footprint. One of the, the previous issues was that the properties were coming very close to property lines at one point. And this, it does look like there is quite a bit of green space around it. And so I just want to make sure that we're adequately depicting what we're looking at.
Right, so I guess I would have to, I wasn't here when the previous project went through, so I would have to look at that specific site layout and how it compares to this one. I do know that on the eastern side of the property, where it juts up onto a hill, essentially, there's a large easement that runs back through there, so I don't think there's concerns of the property lines there. The city obviously owns mostly to the south, which is the People's Park, and then I believe there's a Montessori or a daycare center. And then to the west is really, or, sorry, so the north is really the only concern of abutting other residential properties, but it also appears on this visual as if there's quite a, quite a large planned setback. But I think there's going to be a planned unit development for any of these proposals because of our ordinances requiring pretty large, and abnormally large, I would say, rear setbacks and side setbacks, which is not uncommon. So Layer Farms, for example, went through that same PUD process, as did Huntington Woods. It's a relatively ubiquitous thing in our community.
Thank you. I'm just trying to give people a visual to what to expect.
Mr. CEO?
I guess I just want to say, as a consumer of one of your other projects, I find them to be very responsive and responsible as a company, and it's been a pleasure to deal with from my perspective.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We try, we try very hard to make it our business to serve well.
Nobody else has a question? Mr. Girba?
Just to clarify, and you're proposing full offer, no additional adjustments or anything in terms of hookup fees or any of that?
No, it's, it's a, the offer is pretty, we try to make it straightforward and simple, and we don't have any adjustments or any sort of give backs, as you say. I mean, that's pretty much straightforward.
Mr. Harrington, just one question. The one thing would be is the size of some of those units being all connected that way? I don't know if that's a concern, or would that be a thing in the PUD?
I would have to look at the specifics of the R2. That's something you could adjust, and the only thing that you're strictly prohibited from adjusting in the PUD is the underlying density. So you can't have a PUD request that's more dense than our allowed density districts. But other than that, pretty much every aspect of our zoning ordinance is fair game in a PUD.
I do know that was probably one of the things, that there was a break between some of the units to make it look a little more open space, but that'll be something for the planning and site planning.
Right. There are specific requirements, but you're talking usually about ten units plus in a multifamily complex, so it's usually, you can't have more than ten, ten single-family units on any single, sorry, ten apartment or housing units on a floor. I don't think we're going to run into that with this case.
Mr. Delorco, did you have a question, sir?
I'm just, at this stage, it's so preliminary that it's really difficult to assess out what's being proposed here, without knowing anything additional about on-street parking, what's going to be done to address the municipal lot that serves the park and preventing that from becoming an overflow space for these residents, and how the traffic would be affected on Monroe Street. I just think there's a lot of details that I would need more information about that's not being presented at this time.
One thing I would say is, you know, inherently, the process of identifying a developer to purchase the property is going to be extremely preliminary. They need to go through our planning commission to determine how their site will best comply with our PUD or other requirements. I'm sure we could figure out some additional information regarding connectivity to the park, but this does propose sidewalk connection to the park facilities at this time. And then... time. And then, the question of parking...
Wasn't clear to me. Okay.
Oh, sure. Yeah, you can see it on the...
My map, I could not tell.
See, it's all, the scale is a little bit...
Right by that large shrub and then towards the bottom next to the retention...
Yeah.
So, I would say if there are, as we are weighing two different options for the sale of the property, if there are specific questions that you believe would help you in determining which developer would be the better option for entering into a purchase agreement, please let us know. C.D. Harrington and I can follow up on that. But I do want to caution, we're not asking for a preliminary site plan here specifically because that is a process that has to take place at the planning commission level.
No, I understand that. I'm just, in terms of vetting this project and thinking about what the second presentation is going to unveil, I just need to get a lot more information before I can comment intelligently on any of it.
Sure. Yeah.
That's fair. And as the city manager said, please forward any questions, comments, concerns to her office and to the community development director. If we are able to reach consensus on how to move forward on March the 6th, as the city manager indicated, there are still going to be gaps until such time as we're able to finalize and approve a purchase agreement until whichever developer goes through our planning and zoning process, which at a bare minimum would likely include at least two separate meetings for a preliminary and final site plan. So, this process will, involves numerous steps subsequent to developing consensus on which developer, if we choose one of the two developers to sell the parcel to.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, I know there are some concerns about the public being noticed about this. If and when a property is sold to a developer for a development and it goes to the site plan process, I believe it's 300 feet from the parcel boundary line or notice. So, everyone in the adjacent, immediately adjacent neighborhood would receive a letter in the mail about this parcel being developed and the proposed.
Yeah. I think from the community's perspective, that's going to be very important. And I will sympathize with some of the comments made, Mr. Drews. There's, there's going to be a concern with lot lines setbacks and tree lines. And whoever develops this property, we're going to want to make sure that as many natural features of the site are preserved as much as possible, then we don't impact watershed and preserve as many trees as we can. I appreciate that you're attempting to utilize the infrastructure that's already been put in place. That does make for a less disruptive process for utilizing that land. But yeah, from, from me representing the community's perspective, there's, there's going to be a lot of concern about trees and setbacks.
Understood. And we'll address all those questions, and we're more than happy to address them.
Very good. Mr. Kamar Sulek?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Looking at this very preliminary rendering, it looks like there's a buildup of trees, foliage along the north side, and maybe even the east side of the property. Now, we know that this property has not been an attractive site. And knowing how close some of the residential homes are, I would, I think it would be a great benefit to, in addition to preserving as much greenery as possible, adding so that there is a buffer between this, and especially the houses to the north and east. I like the sidewalk that you're putting, that you're putting in connecting to the park there. But...
We're going to utilize berming and, and greener, additional greenery throughout the project. It makes a lot of sense. There's a lot of dirt over there already, so...
Snow hill.
As opposed to hauling it off, let's, let's build some berms and utilize it as much as we possibly can. It's very expensive to haul dirt away. So, if you can use it, and we certainly can there, because the project does need a little bit of TLC to bring it up to that visual impact that we want to have with it.
Okay. That's all I have.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any additional questions before we wrap up? Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. It's for Mr. Harrington. How does this project, do you feel, fits into our master plan as a purchase versus a rental, three-bedroom versus sort of intro one-bedroom? Where does this fit in with our master plan?
So, the 2017 master plan has a slated, slated to be multi-family. There's not really a clear jurisdiction over how many units per acre they were envisioning for that multi-family. It is zoned R3A, so I gave you it's 12, 12109. I think it fits, generally speaking, into a multi-family project. I think anything R2 or above, so duplexes or above, and this is obviously a form of, a plex essentially. So, it's a five-plex, or I think it fits in that nature. So, comfortably speaking, you wouldn't have to rezone it in any changeable way. I think it fits into the general intent of the master plan to have multi-family on the site. That being said, it's at our discretion to change it for the 2022 master plan. You can make it a single-family. You could make it, as I pointed out at the last meeting, really whatever you want. And since the city owns it, we have the ability to do whatever we like with the site, so.
It seems as though we had been talking more of a rental market that we were looking at creating within the city. So, I think pivoting to for-sale properties versus a rental, I just want to see how that's...
Yeah, absolutely. I think in the larger scheme of things, and looking at our future land use map as it relates to annexation and maybe infill and redevelopment, there are plenty of opportunities to have other multi-family projects. So, if it's not the intent of the council to pursue multi-family rentals, which I do think, especially modern market rate, multi-family rentals, is a gap that we have in this community in terms of housing stock, at this location, that's totally fine. I would just like to have a conversation about other places in the community, and maybe broader regulations that we have that restrict the supply of housing, which is the point of that town hall on the 15th. So, if it's not your intent at this site, that's perfectly okay. And I think we can still accomplish objectives of the master plan to, to add to the diversity of housing opportunities that people have in this community via other means. So, it's not the end of the world, for example, if this doesn't become rental, although I do think, like I said, that's a hole in the market versus we do have a lot of for-sale condos in our community.
Thank you very much.
There are no additional questions for the applicant? Mark, thank you. Appreciate your time. We look forward to continuing this discussion, and we will be in touch.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you again.
Have a wonderful evening.
You too, ma'am.
We are going to proceed with the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any council member or citizen, an item may be removed.
Moved and submitted.
Moved by CO to approve or submit it. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, was that Rice? Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to public hearing agenda, item 23-32, special land use for medical marijuana provisioning center at 121 Sage Court. First motion will be a motion to open the public hearing at 7:35, affording the public an opportunity to speak to this issue.
Moved to open.
Moved by Girbaugh to open the public hearing at 7:35. Was that seconded by CO?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this issue? You will have three minutes.
Matt Rockwell, I still think it's a bad idea. I really do. I see the one going up down there at the end of town. It's still a bad idea. If you guys have not been noticing the news, young kids are dying. We had one in Ann Arbor and one in Dexter. And that came out over a newsletter from the Washtenaw County Chief. And if you guys can't figure that out, then I'm done. I am totally done. I'll move somewhere else.
Thank you, Mr. Rockwell. Is there any additional citizen comments on a proposed medical marijuana dispensary at 121 Sage Court?
Y'all remember me, right? I'm the troublemaker. I've noticed that there are quite a few sites. This is, this is one of several that are, you have in the city going up and in. One of the things I've found out through a little bit of research is that the price of marijuana has come down so hard and so fast that a lot of stores cannot stay in business. My worry is that we're going to build up these new storefronts, and then we're going to have Tyvek hotels in the city because they can't support their business. So, let's let everybody think about what their real strategic plan is here, and what kind of business they're proposing to have for the future, because building it up and taking it down to next year, it's taking somebody else's chance away from having a business.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. Any additional citizen comments relating to a medical marijuana provisioning center at 121 Sage Court? Just for edification, that's the property behind Tractor Supply.
Moved to close.
Moved to close by Councilmember Girbaugh at 7:37. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Kamira Sulek. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now closed. The third motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated January the 13th, 2023, from recording Secretary Ritchie, and to approve with conditions or not to approve the special land use for 121 Sage Court for a medical marijuana provisioning center with the following conditions, seven of them enumerated on tonight's agenda.
Moved to acknowledge and approve with conditions.
Moved by CO to acknowledge and to approve with conditions. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Girbaugh. In the absence of recording Secretary Ritchie, I'm going to let Mr. Harrington begin, and then I'll entertain some comments from Mr. Girbaugh, who's the rep for the planning commission. Mr. Harrington, during your remarks, perhaps you could respond to some of the concerns that were raised by Mr. Drews in his comments just moments ago. One, noting the number of facilities that, that currently exist or are proposed. We had one recently drop out. And also, what restrictions we have put in place to prevent a huge proliferation of marijuana establishments. And then, two, or three, we've made a strong emphasis on making sure that a lot of these proposals, a lot of these development proposals and buildings could fairly easily be repurposed into another enterprise if the marijuana establishment were, one, not to come to fruition, or to ultimately be unsuccessful.
Okay. I think I can answer all three of those questions.
I threw a lot at you.
You might have to remind me of some. So, first one is that we currently have six proposals outstanding. Five, a reason to believe we'll probably go down to five, depending on whether or not that applicant actually falls through the final site plan. We've only received final site plans, actually, for two of these applicants so far. So, I think a lot of them are also cognizant of the fact that the price of marijuana has decreased, and maybe that it's less palatable. I'd also add that when looking at many of these facilities, some of them are existing. The specific facility before us tonight is rather unique for a whole variety of different reasons. But to focus on your question specifically, most of these are repurposing existing multi-tenant suites. They're actually making quite a bit of improvements to meet the modern building code. So, whether or not they're successful, they'll likely, they'll likely leave behind a tenant space that is rentable by somebody else. In addition, the city was concerned about the proliferation of marijuana dispensaries, so they increased the buffer zone. That was previously 250 feet building, side of building or side of suite, to side of building or side of suite, to now be 1,000 feet parcel line to parcel line. And obviously, your property line is well larger and completely envelopes your building. So, the buffer zone has been increased, and we're currently proposing, or will likely have an ordinance in front of council in the future to add a buffer from city parks and museums as the request of council, which then further changes where and how these dispensaries can locate. I forgot your third question.
I think you've pretty much covered it.
So, to go into this specific proposal at 121 Sage Court, Exclusive Brands is the name of the dispensary, and they're proposing a multi-tenant shopping center conversion of the existing car wash structure at 121. This car wash was built in the early 2000s. It was set to open in 2004 and has remained vacant ever since. I do not know why I was not here in 2004. But it's also unique because they're not only proposing a dispensary location, they're actually proposing to convert the existing bays that are made out of solid cement into other tenant suites. At the planning commission, they identified primarily professional services, so things like a tax, a tax person or insurance agent of that sort. The, there are also other concerns raised at the planning commission meeting, such as phasing, where the project have to be done in phases because it's a rather large building, if any of you have driven by it, and there was the applicant's intent to do it all at once. In addition, because of its proximity to another proposed dispensary, and because of its proximity to the, the school parcel that corners on industrial and East Michigan Avenue, they're going to have to provide a licensed surveyor engineer to confirm that, in fact, the ordinance they applied under, which was the 250-foot rule, is being met from the other dispensary, as well as 1,000 feet side of building to school parcel line. The, and as I mentioned, the applicant envisions the other tenants of this building being professional services, as opposed to a more standard retail. And then lastly, the only other item that the planning commission really considered with this is that they asked for a slight deviation in parking, going from the 94 required for a planned shopping center to 90, which is their proposal. And the planning commission did not envision an issue with that. So, with that, I'm happy to take questions. But the preliminary site plan was approved on a seven to zero vote, as was the recommendation for the special land use.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Mr. Girbaugh, would you care to provide any additional perspective as our liaison to the planning commission?
No, Mr. Harrington covered it.
Okay. I would just add a couple of things, because along with Mr. Girbaugh, I sit on the planning commission, and this is, of course, my opinion, but I think it's a pretty good one. I, of all the marijuana proposals that we've entertained, at least on the surface, this is the most appealing. I've done some research on the petitioner, who has an outstanding reputation. Two, as Mr. Harrington indicated, this is a site that has long been dormant and derelict for nearly 20 years. It predates my tenure as both, both mayor and as a, as a council member. And many of you recall that three or four years ago now, we adopted a dangerous abandoned building ordinance, specifically with this, this site, this parcel in mind, that if it continued to deteriorate, that we would have the legal means to petition the circuit court for, for an injunction to either immediately rehab the facility or to demolish it. So, this is a better option, finding a competent qualified buyer who can repurpose the site, make it into something attractive. And what I also like is that it's not exclusively, the enterprises that will be housed on site are not exclusive to marijuana. There will be a dispensary. We have a subsequent motion entertain a, an adult use at the same location. But as Mr. Harrington said, there'll be other professional enterprises on that parcel, maybe an accountant, an attorney, et cetera. So, I think there's a lot of positives here. I think the planning commission had a thoughtful, robust discussion and evaluation on the proposal. And as such, I'll be voting in favor of the motion that's on the floor, currently moved by CO, seconded by Girbaugh, and the subsequent motion 23-33. And at this time, I'd be happy to open it up for questions for, from council colleagues, either for staff or the two liaisons of the planning commission. Mr. Kamira Sulek, you may begin.
I like a lot of the comments that you made, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to see this go from an eyesore to a repurposed, to a repurposed site, get on the tax rolls. One of the questions I have is the curb cut entrance into the back of the center to the right where Imagine Theater is. Is that going to be, is that going to be kept? I mean, I've never driven over there to look at it to see if it's...
I would have to talk with the applicant specifically about that. It does currently exist. I see what you mean. And probably hold a preliminary site plan here, if you just give me one moment. I know there, similar to another comment received on a project in this general vicinity, there are concerns about a potential private agreement that might require them, or maybe it would be in the best interest of both parties to terminate that access point. From a planning perspective, I don't have any particular concerns over how that might go down essentially.
All right. I'm, I'm not in favor of keeping that. I, I think, you know, there's a, there's a risk of the privacy behind all those businesses and, and the theater, and having the one, one or two access off of Sage Court should be, should be sufficient. So, if that can be looked into more.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll definitely bring that count to the planning commission.
Is there any other questions?
Ben, my only question pertains to the 7608 parcel. I'm unclear on who applied for what first and how they're buffered out.
Yeah, absolutely. So, 7608 applied a day before 121 Sage Court. But we did stamp them, so we do know definitively that 7608 is not required in the same sense to meet the buffer that 121 Sage Court is. So, 121 Sage Court will have to prove that they are, in fact, 250 feet from their unit, as they applied under the old rule before the ordinance changed, from 7608 Sage Court, which would be done by a licensed surveyor or engineer to confirm that fact.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I was confused on that point.
Absolutely. Before any building permits are issued, before any final site plan is given, that that will have to be a confirmation made by them. And it's slightly difficult because 7608 is a conceptual building. It has not been built yet.
Right.
So, it adds to the setback standards and everything else, so.
Yeah, that, that is a point of concern. It's one thing when you're taking an already existing building and repurposing it. It's another thing altogether when you're trying to develop a piece of property, so.
Correct. So, I'm very thankful that we changed the ordinance to be far more clear and legally speaking grounded, because a parcel is a legally defined entity versus a building is not, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Mr. Seal?
Just a comment, Your Honor.
Please.
I was on planning commission, all those, many years ago, when this was approved initially as a car wash. I've always thought it was a fairly attractive building by design, and I was very pleased to see this proposal that makes what I think is good use of the building in total. It's going to finally bring it into full use and, I think, retain the character of the building itself. retain the character of the building itself with the red brick and, uh, multiple, multiple fronts. So I think it's a great use finally of that building. I'll be voting in favor.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. CEO. Mayor Protim Dillon.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Harrington, just for clarification, when we talked about, uh, there was a statement made about this is not going to be a phased project. Is that just a statement from the developer or is that a requirement from the Planning Commission?
It is a statement from the developer, but the Planning Commission could in fact make that a requirement if they like, that this will not be marijuana shop first and then other tenants to follow. Um, I, I think there would actually be ramifications for the developer based on how we're measuring from the building, if they chose not to develop those other tenant suites simultaneously with that, because then how are we defining the building? Is it, if, if you're not occupying or choosing to develop the other two bays, I would say that's part of the principal use then as a dispensary, and therefore i- i- it adds implications for that two-hundred-and-fifty feet, it adds implications from that buffer from the school district boundary. Um, so there, there's a couple of factors at play with that.
Thank you very much for that. Now, sticking on the buffer, um, we've talked about this before. It's generally a general statement in all of these as a requirement, and that's that, that survey. At what point does that survey need to be done?
So we'd like it to be done prior to final site plans, the middle.
Okay, so then we know at that point, should there be, uh, ooh, you're, you're a foot and a half short, uh, we will know, and then that stops that process?
Correct. It was a condition of the site plan.
Okay. And then my last comment is on the parking. It was ninety-four required, you sort of settled on ninety. Um, it's four spots here nor there, doesn't seem like an issue, but is it an issue because we made it an issue on the west side in that shopping plaza, that they had to have all of the required spots?
Um, it's slightly different because they're proposing to totally change the use of this particular property, uh, versus the other one was still a planned shopping center. This was never proposed to be a planned shopping center. It was proposed to be a single-use, a single-user car wash. Um, so that does, that actually does necessarily change the calculation, uh, and thus provides the Planning Commission more discretionary review than same use to same use, if that makes sense.
That's fine. I just want to make sure it doesn't look like we're giving preferential to one dispensary over another.
No, and I, I think you could also make the argument, what is the gravity of four spots here, uh, at, at a derelict car wash versus what is the gravity of four spots at a very popular, uh, uh, shopping center? So that there, it, it's not, uh, uh, if we were to ever be pursued on litigation over this, there's, there's commentary over the totality of the circumstances that exist.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Girba?
Just to follow up on Mayor Protim Dillon's comment, uh, could we add that condition at this time regarding the, um, phasing?
That there must be, it must be done in one phase? Yes. I, I, I don't see anything wrong with that.
You want to offer that as a friendly amendment to the motion that's on the floor?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Well, it, it might be better for that to be on a site plan, but it, I, I guess...
Me and I would just have a sidebar conversation. Let's just do both.
Right. So, I mean, at, anyways, it'd be enforced. I, my only concern would be on enforceability on an SLU versus enforceability on a site plan. So, I mean, you could add it. It doesn't, it doesn't negate the SLU, but that condition might be negating.
Yeah, I, I would actually caution against putting it on the SLU because it doesn't meet one of the SLU criteria. So the better place for that is the site plan.
Okay, I was just thinking that, didn't we approve the preliminary site plan as part of the SLU?
Right, so I'm still confused about that specific motion sequence. Uh, we're, we're doing an administrative update with our code right now to also make that a lot clearer.
Let, let's do this. Unless there's objection from the, the DAAS, I'd like to proceed, um, with Mr. Girba and myself indicating to the Planning Commission, obviously, they're free to make whatever decisions they want, but I, I think that the phase in, uh, issue should be resolved by, by way of a condition, uh, during the final site plan, because I would like to see this project completed, uh, i- i- in its totality without marijuana being the initial enterprise and then seeing the potential for, uh, other businesses languish because of lack of action. Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and then for Terry, uh, Clerk Royall's sake, that'll be two separate actions then, one to approve with conditions and one to recommend to the Planning Commission.
I'm not, we don't need to make the latter formal motion. I just wanted to make sure there's no objection from the DAAS. And if there isn't, then between Mr. Girba and I, we can, we can discuss that and, and advocate for it when the Planning Commission reconvenes on this issue in, in a month's time or so. Okay? Um, if there's nothing further, we do have a motion on the floor moved by CO, seconded by Girba, to acknowledge and to approve with the seven enumerated conditions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to the subsequent motion, which is agenda item twenty-three dash thirty-three. This is special land use, uh, for adult use of, of marijuana, uh, retail establishment, more specifically, excuse me, at one-twenty-one Sage Court. The first motion will be a motion to open the public hearing at, um, seven fifty-three, affording the public an opportunity to speak to this issue. Moved by Girba to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamira Sulak. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I have it. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this issue of an adult retail marijuana establishment located at one-twenty-one Sage Court?
All I'm hoping is that I, at, over the years, we've talked about a surety bond. Uh, there's many, many things that have went by the wayside, be it the hotel, be it the car wash, be it the hole in the ground on U.S. twelve, be it Monroe Street, and uh, surety bond is something that, you know, if they come through and they build everything as far as in the car wash, rather than their one option and then leaving the others, I think, uh, somehow there should be some type of caveat for the council to be able, or an incentive for the new owners to, uh, follow through. And surety bonds do work.
Any additional citizen comments on a proposed me to, uh, marijuana retailer at one-two-one Sage Court?
I'm Melissa Phillips, five-seven-nine Forest Brook Court. I have a specific question about the adult use versus the medical provisioning. And the adult use, would that allow for delivery to residential homes? Okay, very good. I am, uh, my voice is that I'm very opposed to having, uh, marijuana retail in Celine. I understand we'll probably get one. I hope no more. One should be enough, and I like the fact for Sage Court, if we're gonna have it, that it's set back off the road. It's not a flag on Michigan Ave welcoming in that business. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Appreciate your comments. Any additional citizen comments on this particular agenda item? Is there a motion then to close at eight fifty-five? Seven fifty-five, excuse me. Moved by Girba to close. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protim Dillon. All those in favor of closing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I have it. Public hearing is now closed. We move to the third and final motion, uh, which is a motion to acknowledge the memo dated January the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three from Recording Secretary Ritchie, and to approve with conditions or not to approve the special land use for, uh, one-twenty-one Sage Court, excuse me, for an adult use marijuana retailer with the following conditions, and there are seven as outlined on tonight's agenda.
Move to acknowledge and approve with conditions.
Moved again by CO to acknowledge and to approve with conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rice. Uh, Mr. Harrington, would you care to make a brief, brief comment?
Yeah, absolutely. And I know this was a comment that was addressed earlier too about surety bonds or how we're gonna make sure that these, I actually had a meeting with Engineer Humphris and our consultant engineers at OHM today. Uh, there is, we have identified a gap in our regulatory ability, you know, post-final site plan to, when we're issuing building permits, to make sure that like engineering requirements and other things are in place so that these don't become large costs for developers down the line and that all these are items they're aware of from the get-go. So I do think we're moving really well in the right direction to make sure that projects that are proposed are going to be completed. Um, there are surety bond measures as always. Uh, those are on their own risks as well, and we can have another discussion about that. Um, but other than that, relatively similar to the conversation we just had on medicinal marijuana. Um, and then for the public's benefit, what was approved is a medicinal marijuana, meaning that it's regulated by the state and that, that any user of that facility has to have a medicinal marijuana, uh, identification card. Versus this, uh, it would be open to the public like any other recreational dispensary, uh, either in Ann Arbor, Ypsilanti, or Pittsfield Township now. Um, so those are the key differences. Uh, I, we do not allow for delivery in the community.
Or drive-through.
Or, yes, or curb-side pickup or drive-throughs of any variety.
That raises a question. Look at number four condition.
In both of them, it says that.
It says, um, patrons to the curb-side pickup entrance.
Right, so that was a, I think we established that. So the, the, it gets tricky with the SLUs, is some of this is information that's meant for the applicant to answer sufficiently for your approval. Some of it is, is a hard-line condition. So, uh, assuming that these items are met, in any event, we can absolutely establish a condition that prohibits curb-side pickup. It might have been an oversight at the last Planning Commission meeting to not have that.
I brought it up.
Okay, so then, we might, we might have added it at that point. I, I don't recall.
Yeah, just clarify. I brought that up to say, and the applicant indicated they would not, if that was our policy, they would not do curb-side pickup. So I'm not sure how that language got in your head.
Right, I think it was more of a comment from the site plan review about the directional signage needed. So I, I think that was an, an omission on my part to not catch that specific clause from our consultant's report.
I thought we had made it clear that, uh, any of the petitioners whose proposals we had evaluated, uh, the Planning Commission, at least on that, on that particular issue, spoke in one voice, which is we do not want to permit, uh, curb-side pickup or a delivery of marijuana-related goods.
Right, that is correct. Like I said, for me, I must, I read directional signage shall be provided, and then I saw the staff should be required to park in the north parking lot. I missed the, the middle chunk there, so I apologize for that. But obviously, yes, we can strictly prohibit curb-side pickup up until the point the city chooses to adopt an ordinance, either with restrictions, strictly prohibiting, or with no restrictions.
Yep, okay, very good. Um, questions for Mr. Harrington? Councilmember Dillon?
Thank you. So just kind of tagging onto that conversation, I believe in past applications, we've actually spelled it out as a condition.
Yes.
Um, can we, can we do that at this time?
Yes.
Can we have some sort of a friendly amendment to make sure? Um, we obviously did not do that on the medical one, just, that we just agreed to. Um, is there any issue with that?
No, I don't foresee any issue. And honestly, after talking to many of these firms that have come through the city so far, none of them have really any interest in pursuing the, the medical aspect of their, their licensure because it's no longer necessary. So they might, they, they get the approval, but whether or not they choose to exercise the, the medical license at the state is a different discussion for them. Um, but yes, so we can absolutely fulfill that on this site plan as well as both the final site plans that would be seen for this project. Um, and I did find the site plan and the access drive to the Imagine is still shown, but that is absolutely a, a, a piece of feedback that, uh, Councilmember Girba, Mayor Marl, and I can bring to the Planning Commission about potentially ceasing that, that access point into the Imagine Theater.
Any additional questions? Any comments on the motion? Please.
Um, just for the, the benefit of the public, um, I have done extensive research on this particular company and, um, have used this company in our personal lives, uh, as my spouse has cancer and, um, has been using their services. They are very discreet. Um, you would not know who they were or where they were, um, by, uh, within blocks of where they are. Um, they take their security and the safety very seriously. We were actually quite surprised to see, uh, to the building, how secure it was. Um, so this particular company, I have full faith that they will continue to do the same here.
Very good. Thank you for that. There's no additional discussion. We do have a motion on the floor moved by CO, seconded by Rice, to acknowledge and to approve with the seven conditions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to unfinished business, item sixteen dash two oh one. This is Code of Ethics Poli- Council Code of Ethics Policy, excuse me. First motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Manager O'Toole and to rescind the ethic policy adopted by City Council on November, uh, twenty-first, twenty fifteen, and to adopt or not to adopt the City of Celine Code of Ethics Policy.
Move to acknowledge, receipt, rescind, and to adopt.
Moved by Girba to acknowledge, uh, rescind, and to adopt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by CO. City Manager O'Toole, because there were some comments made during the, uh, initial citizen comment period, can you provide a little bit of background on, on what is being considered? Uh, maybe elaborate on, on the significant amount of vetting and discussion debate that has gone into this and the subsequent motion, and maybe alleviate some concerns that, uh, individuals who will be part of this process will be biased, uh, against and accused.
Absolutely. Uh, so this is the culmination of probably five or six different, uh, council discussions on this topic. Uh, most recently, a, a work session in, in which we kind of hashed out the final structure of this policy in, uh, September of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, the, the current policy is really an evolution from an existing, uh, Code of Ethics that the City Council has. Uh, this certainly adds more depth to how we would respond, uh, to ethics violations, uh, but in substance, really doesn't change the, the type of ethical standards that we have for our elected officials. Uh, regarding how individuals will be selected for this committee, um, and I'll also preface by saying, uh, this committee is an advisory body. There are only two forms of, uh, two means of removing individuals from office, that is, uh, through a, a citizen's petition and, and through a petition of the governor. Uh, so even council as a body itself couldn't remove a member, and certainly this committee does not have the authority to do that. Uh, further, this committee is advisory in nature. Um, so any reprimand of an existing council person also cannot come from any other body aside from council itself. Um, only council as a body can make the final determination. This body, much like, um, many of our other committees, serves in more of an advisory nature, um, perhaps more because of their expertise, as we'll see in the bylaws, which is the subsequent motion. Uh, they, they will have a, a certain degree of insight into matters of government, law, and ethics.
Very good. Um, are there questions or comments from City Councilmen? We'll start with, um, uh, Mr. Girba and then transition to Mr. CEO.
Um, City Manager, can you explain whether we have the opportunity to refer at any time to an outside source, correct?
Absolutely. Um, this is, this is a policy of the cities, and certainly the, the committee itself also has the option to recognize when, um, a matter might be something that would be appropriate to defer, to defer directly to legal counsel or, or some sort of outside counsel. Um, but again, the, the obligation to, I guess, self, self-police council rests solely with this body.
Anything else, Mr. Girba? No? Mr. CEO?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I read through the bylaws, the proposed bylaws, um, pretty carefully. The one thing that was not explicitly stated is, are the meetings of these, uh, of a, the hearing be a public meeting?
Uh, yes, similar to all of our other committees and commissions, this would be a public hearing. Uh, because it's an advisory body, it is not, um, it is not a governmental decision-making body. It's not necessarily subject to OMA, but as you'll see in the bylaws, we kind of structure it so that it's still a, it's still a public-facing body. Uh, all of the documentation from it would be foillable, and similar to all of our other committees and commissions, we would create agenda packets with those materials. Um, certainly some matters may rise which, um, could be exempt from FOIA or because of the nature of them, we, um, we do have to, like, protect people's personal information, but, uh, that would be reviewed by legal.
I guess the one thing that, uh, came to mind for me was if a councilperson was accused or thought to have, uh, uh, revealed something that occurred in closed session, and that was the issue before this committee.
So we are, um, we're kind of, we're talking about the bylaws right now, and technically the action is the policy, but to answer that question, um, if it is related to the disclosure of information received in closed session, that is, um, that, that is a, that is a legal matter, so that is not something that this committee would, would hear, because they, as the committee, would not be permitted to, uh, know the contents of those sessions.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions regarding this motion, Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. Um, I had an opportunity to speak with the city manager earlier, and I just wanted to, to share that conversation with everyone. Um, the makeup of this body is three members, two alternates. But what it says in here is that a quorum is two members, which, what happens is, my question was, what happens if those two members do not agree on how to move forward? Do they wait and then bring a third person in? Is it sort of where it dies on the vine? So understanding that piece of it.
Yeah, so if it's a three-member body...
So it's a three-member body with two alternates. Uh, the way that the bylaws are drafted, you'll note that every effort needs to be taken to try and get an alternate to participate if a member has to be, uh, absent or if they have some sort of, um, other conflict of, of interest with, with the matter at hand. Uh, the intent would be that a hearing is held with at least three members' presence because we have two alternates to choose from. Uh, there could be a meeting in which only two members were present underneath the existing bylaws. Um, in the case where the vote was split, you know, recall, it's, it's a recommending body. Um, they could either choose to submit back to council with a split vote or host the hearing again or consideration again at a subsequent meeting when at least three members can be present.
So the, the same rule would apply to any of our boards, commissions, or committees.
Yeah.
You'd have to have a majority of vote to make a formal recommendation, which means in a body of three, you'd have to have two vote in the affirmative or two vote in the negative. If it's, if you only have two members present and they disagree, then it's a split decision and no action's taken.
Correct.
But just for clarification then, at what point, so do they come back to this body and say, we're taking no action, or do they continue? and say, we're taking no action, or do they continue to deliberate until they get that, that majority vote?
Well, I think you, I mean, I think to City Manager O'Toole's point is, if in fact, we had a, this is such a hypothetical, so, so remote, and I think it's very remote that it would occur. If you had a meeting where you had two members present and not a third, and they disagreed, then I think the preference would be to convene a subsequent meeting where you could have that third individual who could break the tie.
Yeah, and certainly, if you think there's language that we can improve in the bylaws to ensure that decisions are made by at least three members, or we want to even put in the bylaws in the event that, you know, a vote is split between two members, at least one subsequent meeting needs to occur before they can submit a recommendation of no action, that's an easy enough change.
That would be the subsequent motion, of course.
Correct.
So I, that's something that, you know, I'd like the body to decide if that's a piece, because, like I said, the way that it's written right now, two can meet as a quorum and come to make a decision, but if they don't agree, then we're not giving them instruction as to what to do.
Did you have a comment?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would just make a recommendation that we put a timeline, that they must meet within seven days of any tie of that situation, and if not, then it comes to council.
I mean, certainly, for a body as small as three, the goal should be that you always have three present. That should be the standard. That's what we should strive for. Again, I don't envision this group meeting very frequently, hopefully not at all, but in the events they have to.
With two alternates, that should be a common.
Yes, yes.
We often have an issue where the meeting needs to have a deadline, so that will help make sure that that process is moving.
So I'll ask you, City Manager O'Toole, to reread that recommendation when we get to the subsequent motion.
Absolutely.
Is there any additional discussion or questions on 16-201, a motion we have on the floor to acknowledge, rescind, and to adopt? Councilmember Dillon?
So thank you. And that was, I appreciate everyone taking my comments under advisement. The other comment that we had discussed was that the issue comes about if, there's different scenarios. It could be council v. council, council v. public, council v. staff. Those are three different scenarios that could come about, and when it's council that involves staff, this policy does not play out, correct?
Depending on the nature of the complaint. If it's a, if it's a complaint that because of legal requirements, my office is required to oversee, such as like a complaint of harassment, then correct, this body would not be involved in that process, it would be handled by myself and the city attorney.
And then how does this body get notified of that issue?
Through my communications on the matter, to the extent that they're legally permissible.
Any additional discussion or questions regarding Agenda Item 16-201? Mr. Girbaw?
Just regards with that issue, because that generally is why this policy is being discussed and brought up and being implemented. What's the timeline for you to inform us under that scenario? Or is there not?
I don't believe we have a specific policy on that in our harassment, like our personnel policies and documents. Personally, speaking from, you know, my position, I communicate weekly to council, so I would expect to be the same week that I was notified of the complaint.
And that would not have any over, that could not be overridden by any member of this council, including the mayor?
Correct.
Okay. My only statement I wanted to make is that we have worked on this. It's something that we generally didn't want to have to put in place, but it is something that we need to, because we just didn't have a policy in place that helps us direct or even give the city manager the authority to make sure that proper steps are taken in order to deal with this issue without potential drawn out in timely manner. So I think this is a good way to at least get us started, and the next bylaws will help us address that.
Any additional discussion on the motion? Real quick.
Okay, thank you. One last thing that the city manager and I spoke about, which is that once there's been this trigger of notification, that there should be some sort of mechanism in which all departments are notified that there is a matter, and all documents have to be retained, so that we are not looking at timeframes of, that the windows don't collide.
Yeah, so to clarify on this point, this would be really more of an administrative procedure internally. As you know, you know, we have records retention schedules for certain things, and it's certainly feasible that a complaint might be received within a few days of when video evidence might, you know, cease to be stored. So what I discussed with Mayor Protem Dillon is that, as a matter of procedure, when the clerk's office receives these complaints, any department head who has a department that is impacted by the complaint should be notified that it will be investigated, and records should be retained related to the matter.
Thank you.
That includes video?
Correct.
Well, so you'd be, in theory, you'd be notifying somebody who's under investigation?
Well, the department heads wouldn't necessarily be under investigation in this.
What if the accusation was against the department?
Certainly, why? I guess if the department head was involved in the matter, yes, we, but we're going to notify the individuals, our, the existing policy requires us to notify the individuals of the complaint regardless. So if they were a complaint, someone against whom the complaint had been lodged, they would also be notified.
Okay. Okay, I'm not sure I agree with the latter point, but that, be that as it may. Okay, fair enough. There's no additional discussion on the motion. We have a motion on the floor moved by Girbaw, seconded by CO, to acknowledge, rescind, and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to unfinished business, item 23-40, Board of Ethics Bylaws. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Manager O'Toole and to adopt or not to adopt the Board of Ethics Bylaws.
Move to acknowledge and adopt.
Okay, but we're going to want to adopt as amended. Do you want to, City Manager O'Toole, can I put you on the spot to reread in the section, the applicable section, the language that was just discussed during the previous motion, 16-201?
Yes, so underneath the section on, let's see. I would say probably underneath Section 3.1 on meetings, we would add language that in the event that a tie occurs on any vote of recommendation, the body must meet again within, and I would say, you know, probably 14 days to give people a little bit more time with their schedules.
Within 14 calendar.
Within 14 calendar days.
Hold on one second, hold on, just want to, hold on, folks. Just want to make sure we're all comfortable with the language.
Right.
Within, within 14 calendar days. For subsequent consideration, otherwise, the matter shall be referred to City Council.
Mr. Girbaw, you seemed inclined to move the motion to acknowledge and to adopt. You want to move that with the amendment?
With the amendment.
Okay, very good. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Seconded that, okay, very good, thank you. Discussion on the motion, Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. All I wanted to mention is, would it fit better under 2.1, the second paragraph?
2.1.
When it says, because it actually says, "A motion which receives equal number of votes, both for and against the motion will be deemed to have failed."
So would you strike that and then replace with, or?
Yeah, I guess that's what I want to ask.
That sentence should be stricken.
Yeah, so, sure, yeah, under Section 2.1, membership form of voting, we would strike the final sentence of the second paragraph and replace with?
The verbiage.
The verbiage that I just expressed.
Mr. Girbaw, are you good with that change in, I guess, location within the bylaws?
I apologize for jumping in, and I just thought.
No, it's all right, all right. Mr. CO, you're good as a second with, the language is still the same, it's just moving it to a separate section of the bylaws and then striking the final sentence of that paragraph.
It's fine with me.
Okay? Any additional discussion on the motion? None, okay? Then we have a motion moved by Girbaw, seconded by CO, to acknowledge and to adopt as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item 23-34, Monroe Street, Oakwood Cemetery retaining wall. I'm actually just going to ask for a motion to acknowledge receipt, because I think this might generate some discussion, and there might be a majority who want to revisit this at a later date. So motion to acknowledge receipt.
Okay.
Moved by Girbaw, seconded by CO. Clerk Royal, are you beginning?
Mr. Scherl.
Oh, DPW Director Scherl, excuse me. And then, Mr. Scherl, when you've completed your remarks, I'll yield the floor to Councilmember CO, who serves as the chair of our Oakwood Cemetery Committee.
Good evening. The cemetery board met, and we brought in some outside consultant, consulting. As you know, last week, we looked at another, or last meeting, we looked at another retaining wall. This is a much larger wall. It's over on the Monroe side, taller and more involved. We contracted F&amp;V to give us some ideas, some concepts, and some costs on what potential repairs there could be, could be in play here. We brought them to the board, the cemetery board, looked them over, discussed them, had feedback from Dan with F&amp;V. Dan Kabaj is here tonight, so he could, he'll be available for questions, and I believe, Jack, if they're missing anything, ready to?
Jack, anything you'd like, Mr. CO, excuse me, anything you'd like to add?
Just that we discussed, as Mr. Scherl said, all the options that were presented by Fleiss and Vanderbrink, and we, we recommend the one that involves establishing a concrete wall outside the existing wall and not disturbing the existing wall as part of the process.
And I believe the discussion with, with, with the team, the reason to, we decided on that to bring to council was, it can be done with the maximum life, the best aesthetics that we can imply, and least amount of risk. I think it checked the three big boxes.
Okay, I know this question is going to come up right now, so I'll ask it before I yield to Mr. Kabaj, in the event that he wants to make some comments, and we welcome that, Dan. Larry, from your professional perspective, how problematic is, would it be if this proposal were to be delayed a year or two years?
A couple, Mayor, a couple months ago, it wouldn't have been this, this burning, I guess, but we've seen a little bit more deterioration, deterioration on the surface of that wall recently, and it's, I don't think it's imminent, but I certainly, I certainly know the consequence if we let this one fail.
And so, again, in your professional judgment, at what point do you think we reach the point of failure?
I would not be, I wouldn't be afraid to say we could, we would have a couple of years.
Appreciate, appreciate that.
If I may also, I know this question came up from one council member. If it, if it helps to clarify the point, council is not being asked tonight to commit funds, so potentially, the motion could, could be changed to read, instead of, to approve, not approve, the recommendation, but to acknowledge the, the recommendation. The actual authorization of funds will occur once we actually have bids returned.
Fair enough. Appreciate that clarification. Appreciate the answers on the, on the fly. Generally, not my prerogative to do that, because asking questions in advance usually derives better analysis and better answers, but thank you for that. Mr. Kabaj, appreciate your patience here this evening. Is there anything that you would like to add?
I don't believe anything other than what Larry's pointed out. I do appreciate the sensitivity of, if it does have to delay, I think the two-year is probably pretty good. We have seen some significant spalling of the concrete. That could be monitored. We've done that in the past on other structural items, bridges, dams, whatever, and things of that sort. So maybe that's for your best interest to evaluate it for a while.
Hang tight, Mr. Kabaj, because there might be some questions best addressed by you. I'll begin with Mr. Girbaw, and then jump to Mr. CO.
The mayor has asked that question, imminent collapse, whatever. My concern is just, we're basically taking almost $100,000 out of Perpetual Care Fund and another half million dollars coming out of it, this, well, whatever, that could be the final thing. I believe we need to allow a couple more years of return on that fund, because the Treasury of Coal just finally put it into a plan which will actually earn it significant income, or at least enough to help address that in the early thing. And besides, the other concern is, how many projects do you have going on where this would add another just this year, that I'm more concerned with getting the road projects done? And I don't, hopefully, we're not going to have coffins sliding into the street, but that's the issue for me right now, and can you address that?
Absolutely. I believe at this point right now, we're still, we are now going to get into the serious engineering. I think the decision we were looking for was the concept to, to approach. I really believe that we would have more, and Dan might have some more, we would have some more significant signs that said we, if we had to get, we would, we would hope they would get more significant signs if we had to go fast. But I think right now, this just gives us the concept, the design, the, the recommendation from, from council on what repair method to employ, replacement method to employ. We've got some time just in developing, because now it's got to go in through the true build of plan and get bits.
And could you describe the difference between this one and the one that we're doing on Michigan Avenue, because isn't that one, are they both cement walls? I thought the other one wasn't going to be a poured wall.
The other one is not, but there, again, it's just a massive difference in, in scale and scope.
So the idea of taking the wall out versus leaving it there and then putting the modular units in front of it is not the recommendation that you would recommend from a, from an engineering perspective?
I wouldn't, and.
Sure, Larry.
For the life cycle out of the modular block compared to the concrete, your concrete's going to give you a better longevity, I'll be honest with that. The unilock type of modular is usually a smaller, lower wall that we typically see. The concrete, and I was going to point out, there were like four evaluations. We had one with sheet piling looked at. So we really settled, the cemetery board had suggested the concrete in front of, and because the other thing that when our structural engineer and myself looked at this, there is concern about the grave sites. We would like to keep everything intact. That's our main goal there with that, and we'd looked at even temporary sheeting behind it, but we thought the concrete will work, concrete in front of the old one and keep the concrete intact.
Will it have a similar look to the one that's on Michigan Avenue, that large retaining wall? Because that one is built out of.
Well, we would, I think we're going to be bringing some renderings as we get closer, because we could get all kinds of different stamps on it and make it look, that was part of the, part of the appeal, it was the, the three boxes, right? The risk is taken care of, the longevity is there, and the appearance that we, that we ultimately want will be there.
Yeah, and making as, as less maintenance-free as we can would be the thing, too, so.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. CO?
Just, as it affects so many things in our, in our lives these days, would a significant rainy season affect the ability of that wall, that existing wall to hold? Would that shorten the life?
The, the existing wall, I think at this point, if we're, if we're going to, if we're going to slow, slow, slowly approach it, or slow our approach to this repair, we, we will have to keep an eye on it. In a heavy rain season, absolutely. It could have more of an impact, quicken the rate of failure, or quicken the rate of decline.
Right.
So we would definitely want to keep an eye on it, because it would be a big impact if it failed unexpectedly.
Oh, yeah, we don't want that.
Very good. Additional questions? Mr. Kamira Sulek?
Yes, thank you. Part of my question was, was just answered. Could, is it, is it too much to check on it once a month, or just get it in the book so it's being, so it doesn't get forgotten?
DPW has crews down there at, like, every week.
Okay.
Yeah, we, and it's in a normal, it's easy to see, yeah. In short, yes, we do keep an eye on that wall.
Okay, and then just to play devil's advocate, if it were to, if it were to fail?
I would blame Dan. It would not be good. It really wouldn't be good, right? Then we would have remains, there would be all kinds of requirements to go on, we'd have impact on traffic, it would not, it would be awful. But I don't think, and I, I'm, I don't, I don't think we're in a situation where that wall has given us the signs that it is going to fail in a very short term.
Okay.
One thing upon that, too, if, if it was looking like it's getting severely worse... One thing upon that too, if, if it was looking like it's getting severely worse, the spalling and the leakage of water behind, there is settlement at the top. I talked with our structural engineer, you could always put a temporary sheeting in front of that that would at least give you a little bit of time, but I don't think you want to rely on something. If it does, does start to deteriorate badly, this monitoring monthly or however the DPW wants to, definitely you want to look at.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Kamira Sulek?
That's it.
Thank you. Let me jump back to Councilmember, or jump now to Mayor Protem Dillon and then Mr. Del Orco.
Thank you. I think we've talked about that wall since I've been on council. And at one point, we, we've done a lot of different things to it, sort of slow fixes to it. Are you going to be removing the staircase that's there? Because that's what we were always told was the issue.
No, we're going to be building a new wall in front of that wall and leaving it, leaving the stairs there.
Because isn't that what's bowing it out, is the stairs and the moisture?
Dan, maybe you could help me with that one.
Right now, those weep tiles are kind of filled in. Those, those are old. They naturally will drain what's behind the water out on the street. You see the maybe two-inch holes along that wall. If, when this is fixed for a permanent measure, we would want to, I, I think on a couple of the details that were in the, like the sketches, we do have an underdrain behind that. So, that would help with the moisture. But the stairways pushing out, I think we just, we would cut back on that when we do the permanent fix. I don't think the stairway itself is pushing, but we're, we're going to have to make accommodations on that.
Okay. And then, as a near-term, short-term fix, can we just brace the wall? To keep it from falling, I mean, can we brace it up?
I, I guess if we got to the point where it needed it, I, I'm sure there could be something figured out, but I think in the, if we needed a short-term hold it together while we finished up a plan because something changed in how it was degrading, we would probably drive sheeting behind it to, to hold that weight, to give us time.
Okay. How close are remains to that wall?
As they migrate, they could be close, very close.
I mean, will we need to move them to do construction?
That was one of the reasons this was such a good option, so we did not have to get into exhuming.
Okay. I will say that I do share Mr. Girba's sentiment that this will really take a huge hit to the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, which makes me very uncomfortable that we will not have a means of building that up once, I mean, it's going to take much longer to build it back from that point. So, if at any way that there is to do, you know, to, to phase this project or so that we can build some more revenue and, and reserves, I think there's a couple other avenues that we're looking at with the cemetery right now, is to start to build up some of those, those funds a little bit more, I think is something that I would like to pursue.
Mr. Del Orco?
It's clear that what's giving some of us pause is the amount of money that's going to take to fix this thing. And just thinking about what could cause that number, that projected number to go even higher is the footings that are underneath that wall. Has there been any sampling done to determine what the material is that those walls were built on, the footings?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna shoot from the hip and say no at this point.
Because if you have to cut through the footings to put the new wall in front of it, you're going to weaken the integrity of that wall.
Yeah, that's why after this, our next step would be getting to the actual engineering of the new wall so that we made sure that's, I don't, I don't think it was proper to spend a lot of money on that right now just to come up with.
Yeah, I'm just, I just, I don't want the bid to come back at $800,000 when it's projected to be $500,000 because we got to move fieldstone out from underneath that wall to build the new wall or whatever the case may be. That's the thing I, I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I, I understand. Again, I, we haven't done the actual engineering of this wall past making sure that there is good plans to work off of, good concept and plans that would work for that replacement.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff regarding the motion? And again, we just have a motion to acknowledge receipt on the floor. No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Girba, seconded by CO to acknowledge. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say having the motion carries unanimously. And what's your pleasure? We can do a motion to approve, not to approve, or some amended language similar to what City Manager O'Toole articulated just a few moments ago.
I'll move to acknowledge and.
It's already been acknowledged.
Well, we have acknowledged receipt of the memo that she recommended.
Yeah, and to acknowledge the recommendation of the Cemetery Board as well. It'd be acknowledge and acknowledge.
So, no approval then?
Correct, because you're not authorizing funds at this point.
Okay. All right. So, can we restate that motion for the public's benefit, council's benefit and for mine?
Sure. So, you've already acknowledged receipt of the memo. This would be a motion to acknowledge the Oakwood Cemetery Board recommendation of option 3A from Fleas and Vanderbrink in the amount of $538,930.
Okay, that's been properly moved by Girba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Del Orco. Any additional discussion? Mr. Girba.
Do we need to acknowledge the dollar amount or something for continuing?
For like design services or things like that?
If you could come back with a number for that. I, I just don't know how we want to do this.
I mean, realistically, no, we, that has not been our past practice. Knowing that this is the recommendation of the Cemetery Board and council supports that recommendation, staff would just go out and get the, the design proposals and present it like.
Because we have our, got it, we've got our already recommended.
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll, we'll present the design proposals.
Mr. CO?
No. That's my question.
The only comment I was going to make, and we had a sidebar conversation, a few of us between the work meeting and the regular meeting, I share the concerns that have been expressed by some of my colleagues about the amount of money that is, was, is either proposed or is going to be spent out of the Perpetual Care Fund. And obviously, want to maintain a healthy fund balance in that account as we do in all of our accounts. So, there's two ways to do that. Obviously, you can be more conservative on the expenditure side, and when applicable, we should, but we should also be working to develop new revenue. And so, it's been expressed to me that there's some utilities and electrical lines that may be relocated or replaced in the vicinity of the podium, thereby freeing up or creating fish, 50-plus additional spaces. I just want to state for the record, I would be very much in favor of moving expeditiously on that, on getting those, those lots available for sale because that would generate, I think, just shy of $100,000 to the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund.
Someone's been telling you our, our meetings, Mayor. Yeah, they're.
A good mayor keeps his ear to the ground.
We're going to fast-track the, the securing those sites, not securing those sites, but confirming those sites and where they would be and bring that to the board at our next meeting.
Very good. Okay, excellent. One last comment, Mr. Girba, before we vote.
And I was talking with Mr. CO about this issue. We should also look at even where those trees and everything are placed above there because those are, although they've been there forever, they're starting to get to the point of, of their lifespan ending, especially those grass trees. But whatever a proposed design that could add even additional cemetery lots, I mean, that's the goal of that cemetery is to be able to provide for citizens, so it's not necessarily for all the trees that are up there. So, things have to change. I would also make that suggestion.
Excellent. We'll be looking in that area too.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. All right, we have a motion on the floor, moved by Girba, seconded by Del Orco to acknowledge. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say having the motion carries unanimously. Gentlemen, thank you very much. We move on to new business item 23-35, determination of mayor council salaries for 2023, 2024. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from the Local Officers Compensation Commission with a notice of determination setting forth the salaries for mayor, mayor protem and council for 2023, 2024, and to approve or not to approve the increases as recommended.
Move to acknowledge?
Moved by Dillon to acknowledge. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamira Sulek. Do anybody from staff care to comment on this or can I defer to Mrs. Hess, who is a, a voting member and I believe the Chair of the Local Officers Compensation Committee? Mrs. Hess, is there anything that you'd like to say for the record this evening? Please come to the microphone.
I had to ask what the percentage was of the staff when they got their contracts, and so that was addressed, but it came like $250, I think. And so, it was thrown out, and I feel it's very, very low. And I do know the time you put in, and I do know if it was ever put, the hour that you make an hour, it's unbelievably low.
10 cents.
But, questions? I would hope that this, the committee, they felt that it still should stay within the reason of the amount that was projected.
Very good. Why don't you hang tight, Mrs. Hess, because there might be some questions best addressed by you. There are questions or comments from the days? Mr. Girba?
Mrs. Hess, what do you use as a comparison to calculate the figures that were determined? What do you use for any kind of comparison?
Well, the basic, we do have the history that is given to us by staff as far as other communities and be them full-time. There's a couple communities that the mayor is also the administrator, but, so that was what we used for a comparison of, if that helps.
Any additional discussion or questions for the Chair of our Local Officers Compensation Committee? Ms. Dillon?
So, thank you. So, based on that, were we low, were we high, were we right, sort of, you know, in the middle?
I think, I personally think it's a little low, but statistic-wise, it was in the ballpark because, you know, I would kind of give to the, as far as the city administrator possibly to answer that because, and also the clerk was given us the information, so they might be able to make a comment on the ballpark figure.
Go ahead if you have additional questions.
Oh, thank you. So, just, just in comparison though, it's like we can't really compare our salaries to staff because we don't get the benefits on any level that staff has that factor into salaries. So, trying to figure out how to, to match that and find that balance, because it seems, I hate to say excessive for us, if you go by percentage, by dollars, it's, it's nominal. But that's, that's how our salaries are structured. And so, trying to understand how that relates across the board.
Well, as a percentages, it is a higher percentage, but if a comment is made, I would think that you could answer the staff and said, would you like $500 a year raise? So, I think that that's important. Also, there are issues of where some councils are paid per meeting over and above. So, there are other criteria that comes into this too. But I do agree, the percentage was higher, but that's because the salaries were very low, and to put that percentage on, it came out of pittance.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or discussion? Mr. Kamira Sulek?
Yes. Doesn't the Michigan Municipal League do studies and, and track to some extent the salaries of staff and councils?
I think that's where we were given the information that the city clerk gave to us to work with. I think it came from MML. I'm not sure she would know.
Your comment?
I think it came from not only MML, but it was also through communities that are like size, like Chelsea, Mylan, places that had similar sizes, so that was given to the votes.
Sounds like credible data. Thank you.
There's nothing further. We have a motion on the floor, moved by Dillon. Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Moved by Dillon, seconded by Kamira Sulek to acknowledge. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say having the motion carries unanimously. Is there a subsequent motion to approve or not to approve or no action?
Move to approve.
Moved by CO to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamira Sulek. Any additional discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Girba.
Do we have any numbers? When you mentioned comparison, what is Mylan receiving? Do you have that information? My only one thing is that as we look at, we're talking about cuts and everything and understanding how to make money saving, savings for the city and so forth, it's difficult. We postponed the 2020 increase because, well, I voted against it, I believe it got increased anyways, because of the concerns with this type of situation. As we know, inflation has gone up, there's a number of other things. I'm looking at it, on our average, we probably receive about $160 a meeting, if only just counting the meetings that we, that we actually attend in terms of just our regular meetings. But we all know that each one of us attends at least one or two more based on our committee and other appointments. So, as it starts getting down there, the amount that we're paid is minimal. It depends on what you consider a reasonable reimbursement for us, some of us in terms of our abilities and skills, or the issue is, is this all a volunteer source? And I guess that's going to be the concern of individuals is whether or not, when we incur expenses and so forth, do we as a city reimburse those individuals? Or is it just more of an issue of, we should be on a voluntary approach and consider this a privilege? So, those are the concerns that I bring up and I have to weigh each time I look at when I approve these. Times I have approved them, times I haven't. So, tonight may be an issue for me.
Yeah, if, if I may, Mr. Girba, I, I certainly don't do this job for the money. I, I do it because I'm passionate about, about the community and, and its future. And as you just articulated, in light of a, essentially an austerity budget that we'll be considering later this spring and likely have to consider again in 2024, that will consider, actively consider cuts and consolidations and some reductions in, in services, I, I do not feel comfortable accepting an increase, albeit a very nominal increase. So, the motion that's on the floor to approve, I will be voting against. Any additional discussion? Ms. Rice?
I also have similar feelings as it pertains to my own personal willingness to spend the time and put forth the effort, knowing what we're compensated. I will, however, like to acknowledge that the next couple of years in particular, I foresee that council will be spending additional time as we go through the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation process and as things come up. But I just want to acknowledge that we are all aware of that, that our time and our energies will be, you know, perhaps stretched a bit over the next couple of years. But with that, I would also vote no to an increase in taxes.
Councilmember Dillon?
Thank you. I, I think at this point, I, I appreciate what everyone is saying on both sides of, of the issue. They're all valid points. I, I do want to look forward to what future council members may expect. Not everybody may be expecting to do this job for free. And so, as we talk about the next generation of people, I do believe that there does need to be some sort of financial, you know, incentive for people to want to do this. It's obviously not a salary in which is a livable wage by any means, but it acknowledges the effort, the time, the experience that this body puts into our community, and I'd like to make sure that we don't lose sight of that. What I would like to do is propose that we postpone until we get through budgeting and see where we have dollars and where there could be allocations of future line items, where there's underutilized budgets. Like I said, there are issues in which this body does not receive the same level of compensation as staff as far as training budgets, amenities, things like that. So, maybe there is an opportunity moving forward that we can all sort of squeeze the lines a little bit when we look at our budgets and figure out what would be fair and equitable for this body.
There's nothing further. We do have a motion moved by CO I have seconded by Kamira Sulek. Is that correct, Clerk Royal? Okay, to approve. All those in favor signify by, say again?
I'd like to make a motion at this point.
What?
To postpone.
Okay. Well, what's the date certain of your postponement? Because you need to have that when you move to postpone.
So, I would need to look at when we are budgeting.
And I don't know the restrictions on the recommendations that come from the local officers. And I don't know the restrictions on the recommendations that come from the Local Officers Compensation Committee. Can they be postponed? And can council consider a raise for itself, a salary increase for itself at any time?
Yes, I believe it can be postponed. No, the way that it's structured, you should, it should come on the basis of the recommendation. But certainly, you could postpone the implementation of the recommendation.
Okay.
You know, for example, this aligns with the calendar year. If you wanted to postpone to align with the fiscal year instead, that, that could be done. In which case, you probably wouldn't want to consider again until we were towards the end of our budget season and we had a better idea of final numbers. And that would be, I would say, the second meeting in April. We'll have already done our budget workshop.
So, safely, May, the first meeting in May?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
We need a, a date certain, though.
Oh, sorry.
And I need, I would need.
First meeting in May.
And to ensure that the.
You don't have all the dates?
To ensure that the motion is appropriate, I need to know the exact wording.
Just waiting on the dates. Oh, May first. May first, okay. So, move to postpone, consideration to, for compensation to May first?
It should really be postponement of the recommendation from the Local Officers Compensation Committee until our next regular, until our first meeting in May, 7:00 PM on May the first, 2023?
Correct.
That sounds good.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kamira Sulek. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Nay? There's just one nay? Okay. Eyes have it, motion passes six to one. We move on to new business item 23-36, raffle license foundation for Seline area schools. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the email from Benjamin Lilly and to approve or not to approve the raffle license for the foundation for Seline area schools.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Girba to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who's, I'll let Rice be the second on that one. Is Mr. Lilly here? The record reflects he is not. Clerk Royal, in his absence, do you care to comment? Make sure you pull the microphone close to you. Thank you, Terry.
I don't have very much information. I just got this from him a few weeks ago. And he wanted this done as quickly as possible. So, I don't know if the event has already passed or if they've missed it. Because it has to go to the state now after they get approval from us.
Mr. Seal, you may have some additional insights on this.
Yes. Mr. Lilly called me directly one night at home. And on behalf of the, it's the Seline area foundation, he is trying to obtain a raffle license to help them raise money this year. And his understanding was one of the requirements for his organization to get this raffle license from the state was that he had to have the approval of the local governing body. And I've seen that before when we've tried to apply for a raffle license with the sister city relationship. So, I think, I don't know why some have seen it, some haven't, but.
Ms. O'Toole has a little bit of information.
And if I may, real quick, before the city manager speaks, Mr. Lilly had actually reached out to the city clerk and I the Friday afternoon preceding our last council meeting. And so, unfortunately, I was not able to accommodate him in accordance with council rules that say that an enumerated action item can only be added to the agenda if it's of, of particular importance or of paramount, or of profound impact on the community. So, I apologize to Mr. Lilly and the Foundation for Seline area Schools for the delay. I don't necessarily make or agree with all the rules, but I am obligated to enforce them as the, as the Chair of the body. So, that's the reason why it was, it was presented as a new business item this evening. And I hope it didn't cause any significant issues for the foundation or Mr. Lilly and his colleagues. Please, Ms. O'Toole.
Yeah, I was able to do a little bit of background research about the state's requirements on this. It appears that they require the resolution any time a charitable organization is registering with them for the first time to become a charitable gaming organization. Or periodically, they may request updates that would require the resolution. So, my guess is one of those two activities was triggered in this case.
I don't think they've ever applied before. So, I think this is their first occasion. And he called me and I did refer him to the clerk in order to properly put something on the agenda.
Very good. Questions for city staff? Mr. Girba?
Actually, for Mr. Seal. And the event's going to be in the city?
Yes.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
I think. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just was, that just came and dawned on me, hoping that we're the correct, well, it depends. Because isn't there, the foundation has an address in the city?
Yes.
Yes, the foundation itself is located in the city, which is why we're the jurisdictional body.
Just clarify that. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
Just for clarification, what exactly are we resolving?
All we are doing is saying that we resolve that this is a charitable organization operating within our jurisdiction and so is eligible for a gaming license through the state.
And we don't have any due diligence to provide that they're in good standing or anything like that on our part?
No, they just want to know that they've met the requirement of having that resolution received by the local jurisdiction. Certainly, I expect if, you know, we had history with this organization in the past or like the members of that body, this would be our opportunity to weigh in and say, no, you know, they're running that illegal poker game out of the back. Let's not, you know.
Any additional questions or comments pertaining to the motion? Mr. Kamira Sulek, before we vote?
Yeah, more of a comment. It looks like it's six, saying that it's six weeks out from the event from January 20th. So, there is some time, but it does seem timely. We all know, I, I think most of us know how much the Foundation for Seline area Schools does for the school district and especially with budgeting constraints. So, this is, this is an importance, important consideration.
Okay, if there's nothing further, it's been properly moved by Girba, seconded by Rice to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 23-37, wastewater treatment design engineering services. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt from the, of the memo from city manager O'Toole and to approve or not to approve the contract for wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation design engineering services with Tetra Tech in an amount not to exceed $1,900,000.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by CO to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council member Del Orco. City manager O'Toole, would you like to begin?
Absolutely. So, this is the second part of a multi-part breakout of all of the engineering and design services for the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. If you recall, the city did do a competitive bid process to select its engineering consultant that followed the guidelines established by the state revolving fund to ensure that all of our engineer, that the final selected engineer was the most qualified. It was a qualifications-based selection process. Tetra Tech did win that award. But to keep up with the aggressive timeline, their initial proposal only covered through the 30% design phase, which as of our last meeting, you got to see the update on that progress. This next phase will take us through actual bid and award recommendations. So, pretty much everything up and to the point that we're really ready to begin construction. Their last proposal did come in, did finish, so to speak, about $200,000 under budget. So, tracking very well in terms of maximizing the use of funds available. And overall, even with this increase, right now, the, the total engineering costs are about 4.2% of the project total. So, again, still tracking right where we need them to be or, or below, really, in terms of what we have allocated for the, the project itself.
Excellent. Mr. Rubel, our representative from Tetra Tech, would you care to make a brief obligatory comment this evening for the record? We appreciate your patience hanging in till just a few minutes before nine o'clock.
I will be brief and it is obligatory, I think, that I speak briefly about that subject. So, and Ms. O'Toole ran through my remarks, so I will refrain from repeating many of those. But first of all, we certainly appreciate the trust that you've put on it, put into us to lead you through this very important project. And we went through all the technical details last time. You asked several questions, which I did my best to answer through the city manager. So, hopefully, those answers have been given to you by this point. We spent three and a half months really finalizing the concepts and getting the design started. And as Ms. O'Toole mentioned, we are under budget, which I feel good about. But there's still a lot of work left. There's, by our projection, about 12,000 hours left to finish, including the design and the bidding process. So, it's a large amount of time. And just to give you a snippet of that, last month, I, I had 33 different staff members work part of their month on the project. That's not 33 full-time equivalents, but there's 33 different individuals at some point helped move the project along. And I, I would bet that's going to be over 40 this month as we really roll at this point. So, I, I feel, although it's a very large number, I feel very good about the percentage of the project. To be at roughly 4% is actually amongst the lowest that I have seen on a big, complex project. And I, I believe it's due to our familiarity with your site. We don't need to learn about your site. We have hit the ground running. And I think that efficiency will continue through the end of the project. So, at that, I will conclude the brief part and certainly be available to answer any questions.
Very good. Hang tight in the event that there are questions or comments that are best addressed by, by you, Mr. Rubel. Are there questions for the city manager or for our guest from Tetra Tech? Councilmember Dillon?
Thank you. So, once we close on our revolving fund loan, these dollars will go back into the sewer fund. We're just sort of forwarding it.
Correct. These are fully reimbursable expenses once the loan proceeds are realized.
Additional questions or comments? It was easy tonight, Brian. Thank you. Appreciate your time. City manager O'Toole, thank you for your analysis. Is there any subsequent discussion on the motion? It's been properly moved by CO, seconded by Del Orco to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 23-41. This is 2023 Ford F-550 Super Duty truck. This is a pretty straightforward motion, one to acknowledge receipt of the memo from DPW Director Scherls and to approve or not to approve the purchase of a new 2023 Ford F-550 from La Fontaine of Lansing in the amount of $54,860.
Motion to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Kamira Sulek to acknowledge and to approve. Is that seconded by Dillon?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Scherls, if you would care to comment and per some statements that were made during the public comment period, if you'd talk about the competitive bidding process that's done for vehicles of this nature, that would be, that would be great.
Yes, Mayor. With this vehicle, we did check the pre, the purchasing collectives, which usually gives municipalities a price break. This vehicle did not have one. None of the collectives, collectives had this vehicle on it. This did go out for open bid through BidNet. It was advertised. We took the lowest qualified bidder, which there was actually only one. That's one of the, one of the downsides of the inventory right now. But we did get what everyone feels like was a very good price on it. With the outfit not, not known right now, we do not expect it to be over $50,000. We're going to come back to council for that outfit. We're going to bring that back to council so we know. It is being purchased through the VERF. It was budgeted for. It was in the council-approved VERF. And we will, and it is split out of the accounts based on the estimated usage of this vehicle.
Questions for our DPW director? Mr. Kamira Sulek?
So, this, this truck will be able to plow snow?
Yes.
And be able to do, help out until we get the main, the, the big truck that costs a little bit more?
Yes, this, this truck will be full service for Public Works. We'll use it for, for a lot of our work. And snow plowing is, is one of the jobs.
Okay. And we'll, we'll recapture some funds by selling the existing 1999 truck, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We will put it out for auction.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. Is this truck, it's a standard two-wheel drive, not a four-wheel drive vehicle?
Yep.
Is it normal?
Yes, for our uses, yes. For this truck. Our, our big trucks are also, they don't have any four-wheel drive on them either.
And do our new vehicles come with GPS, like built in, like so that we have vehicle tracking?
Well, you, the simple answer, no.
Just let me clarify. It's not that I want to track what you're doing. I think it's really cool when I look at communities where you can see where the snow plows are. I think that would be a really great interactive map for us so that people can know when those plows are coming around.
Predict spending some money. I really do, I, I totally appreciate where you're coming from. We really want to get into that. We want to try and leverage what databases we have today. Fleet Tracker is on our mind. I really love what Waste Management has with route optimization. We also want to incorporate that into our leaf collection and a whole lot of other practices, the jobs that we do. So, it is on the horizon for us.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Seal.
In my technical experience, those GPS usually come through the radios. They're installed in the vehicles.
Okay.
Any additional questions, comments? Larry, Mr. Scherls, excuse me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there's no additional discussion, we do have a motion on the floor moved by Kamira Sulek, seconded by Dillon to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The last action on tonight's agenda is 23-39, Du Bois Chemicals. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt from wastewater treatment superintendent Briggs and to approve or not to approve the purchase of Dell Pack at a price per pound of 47 cents and authorize, not authorize, the city treasurer to amend a line item 59, 590, 527-754-000.
Move to acknowledge, approve and authorize.
Moved by Girba to acknowledge, approve and to authorize. Is there a second to that motion? Was that by CO?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. God bless you for your patience. Would you care to give a brief report on this issue?
Yeah, this is due to increasing costs that is affecting very many things. And so, they, they've instituted this price increase. It will cause some, as noted, an increase in the line item of about 50, 49, 50,000, 49 or 50,000 dollars per year at this point.
And you anticipate that holding steady for the foreseeable future?
I hope so. I hope so. You never know nowadays with how fast things are going up.
Right. Questions for our wastewater treatment superintendent? Councilmember Dillon?
Just for clarification, is this a process that we will use even when we rehab the plant?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Nothing further?
No.
Bill, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Superintendent Briggs, appreciate it. We do have a motion on the floor unless there's a discussion. Moved by Girba, seconded by CO to acknowledge, approve and authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move to the discussion portion of tonight's agenda. First up is commission committee and task force reports from council. I'll begin immediately to my left and, and with myself and Mayor Protam Dillon. So, Mr. Girba, the floor is yours.
No updates. Planning was canceled for this Wednesday and there is nothing else with our risk until we meet this Friday.
Okay, very good. Mr. Del Orco, any commission committee or task force reports?
Not until next meeting. Environmental meets in the third week and so does code reviews.
Councilmember Rice?
No updates from historic district or parks. But I will say that we had a very productive first meeting with our Seline City Council and Seline Main Street Committee. And lots of great ideas were shared. We shared all of our goals. And we will getting, be getting back together soon with Seline Main Street coming back to us with some of their strategic planning needs for the upcoming year. And we will look to see how they fit to the city's goals.
Excellent. Councilmember Kamira Sulek, any commission committee or task force reports?
No, all the, all my committees meet in the next week or two.
Okay. Mr. Seal?
Yes, sir. It was January the 26th, which was last Thursday, I think, a week ago Thursday.
Sounds about right.
At four o'clock, we had a special meeting where we met with Mr. Cabbage and he, he helped us develop the recommendation we looked at tonight at council for the cemetery wall. It was, the next meeting is coming up in two months, April.
Very good. Councilmember Dillon, or Mayor Protam Dillon, any commission committee or task force reports?
I think the only one since our last meeting was the Seline Fire Board met. We had a work session and a regular meeting. And we will be bringing a budget and some other items to this body in the near future.
Very good. Let's transition to the last item, which is reports and other announcements. I'll, I'll begin. I believe Mayor Protam Dillon and councilmember Girba were in attendance along with myself last Thursday for a town hall on the city's new rental inspection program. It was very well attended. We got a lot of good feedback, some positive, some, some negative, but, but, but good. I thought Mr. Radzik from Carlo Wartman did an excellent job providing an overview of the policy and addressing questions and concerns. One thing that I did not state publicly at last Thursday's town hall, but I'll, I'll state now, that if anyone, landlord, tenant, or any concerned citizens has ideas or suggestions on how that policy ordinance can be revised and improved, we would welcome that feedback. I don't view any of our regulations as antiquated dictums that just sit on a desk or a shelf and collect dust. If there's ways to improve them, modify them, enhance them, I would like to hear that. And of course, I can. And of course, I can't guarantee results because I'm only one member, I'm only one of a seven-member legislative body, but I can guarantee effort. So if you provide us some feedback on how that policy or any of our policies can be changed, it will definitely receive the review and evaluation it warrants at both the code review level and by city council. Mr. Gearbaugh, any reports or announcements?
Just a couple. I want to invite all the individuals in Seline to attend the historical societies, the Underground Railroad in Michigan on February 12th at 2:00 PM in the Brecken Room. That's part of our Black History Month recognition. And also I want to mention that I had the opportunity to participate in one of the focus groups with Main Street and other members of property owners and such that were downtown to discuss their strategic plan and meet with their consultant. I felt it was a very worthwhile session.
Good. The book discussion on Michigan and the Underground Railroad, so that's this weekend?
This weekend, February 12th. Yes, on Sunday.
Is that Sunday? Okay. At the library?
At the library in the Brecken Room.
Very good. Sounds interesting. Mr. Del Orco, any reports or announcements?
I have none.
Councilmember Rice?
I have none.
Councilmember Kamira Sulek?
Yes, I do, for the DEI committee. As we all know, it is Black History Month and the struggles and heartbreak of the black community are far from being over. Not just a hurtful piece of history. Violence and injustices faced show themselves in many different forms from police brutality and justice system that imposes harsher, harsher punishments to daily microaggression that slowly wear a person down. As the city of Seline DEI, we want to highlight Black History Month by coming together as a community to acknowledge this and discuss the need for a month of celebration of blackness. We are asking members of the community, along with our leaders and elected officials, to show us why Black History Month is important to them and our community. This can be through a tagged post, an email, or dropping a written statement at city hall on February 15th. We will pick 10 people to give a Black Lives Matter sign or flag so they can show their support for the black community with our, within our town. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for sharing that. Mr. Seal, any reports or announcements?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mayor Protem Dillon?
Nothing additional.
Easy enough. Then we will proceed to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, and I do want to make a comment as far as the determination of the mayor council salaries. When I was first elected in 1972, I think the council had $300 and the mayor had $600. When I left in 2005, it was a little over $1,000 the council made and the mayor made double. Believe me, no one runs or serves for council for the money. And thank you all for serving us so well.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Any additional citizen comments? You may discuss anything you want at this time, but you will be limited to three minutes.
Hi, Sal Randazzo, Seline resident, city of Seline resident. I just wanted to go on the record saying I've contacted the city clerk and I have an intention to put a referendum and a initiative on the ballot and I intend to work with the city according to the charter. I already have language prepared for those items and so I just wanted to go on the record because I just made a phone call. I didn't do it in writing. Another thing I would say, I think as a citizen of Seline over 35 years, it would be a very bad look if you raised yourself more than what the commission has recommended. My water bill, last one was 500 and the one before was 700. You've created a whole bunch of new fees with this ordinance, 844. The average family, I believe, they're saying is about $6,000 a year purchasing power deficit from a year previously. So the, the people of Seline, along with the high prices and fees and, you know, let's be honest, the services haven't been stellar. So I think to, to not take the recommendation of the commission for salary and try to raise yourself more would be a bad look. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randazzo. Any additional citizen comments? You may discuss whatever it is you'd like to discuss.
Good evening. My name is Chang Ming Fan, local social entrepreneur. I want to say something out of my heart first. Thank you. You are good people. What I mean people is as Mr. Lincoln before he died, but the government, not parish. The government he mentioned about is of the people, by the people, for the people. You are people, not robots, not horse. Even robot and horse need energy input, otherwise it will not run. I'm talking specifically about the compensation or salary or whatever you call that is off balance. It is time for us not to check, it's balance. Check, 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 it's not good. Check balance, check balance, check balance. This country is the day one, is kind of check and balance is wobbling, dancing back and forth all the way until now. It is the time for us to talk about that. What do you get? The money. Is it off balance? And how much? Based on the spirit or truism or based on what it is we call that market value or contribution? Whatever you call that. But now I think it is too much socialistic. We ask you not volunteer only. You contribute more hours, great job, I'm the beneficiary. But I think it is time for us to talk about as a series, not just this local government, not just this area. So let's the people decide. And some of you really, really know that is off balance, but in a way they say they are very wrong. I don't feel comfortable. This is not China, communist country. To each according is need from each according to his spirit, to his needs, that's not working well. So I don't know, is it two minutes or three minutes already?
You've got 30 seconds.
Well, thank you. And again, you are the best people. We need you based on what we need. That's why the of the people, by the people, and for the people. People not come happy. You can see that, even you already, you guys.